Function identified as a globe is located in the bottom of your Zoom screen. Please click the globe button and select the language you prefer, English, Spanish, or Chinese. Do nothing if you want to hear English deliberations, but you will not be able to hear English translations of Spanish, Chinese, or public comments. That's if you choose the other language script. Please welcome Ellen Garcia and Eileen Lee as our translators today. Thank you for joining us. We'll be providing the translation services tonight. Elena, we'll turn it over to you to provide Spanish language instructions on how to set up the interpretation function.
Thank you. Gracias a todos, bienvenidos. Esta reunión va a ser traducida al español. Si es que ocupa traducción, por favor, seleccione el globo al inferior de su pantalla que dice interpretación y escoja el idioma español. Gracias.
And Eileen, I'll turn it over to you to provide the Chinese language instructions on how to set up the interpretation function.
Thank you. 谢谢.
During this state of emergency, the meeting will be conducted in accordance with California Government Code 54953 sub-paragraph E, as authorized by Resolution of the City Council of Mountain View. Please contact the city clerk at Mountain View. The clerk at MountainView.gov to obtain a copy of the applicable resolution. All the members of the EPC are participating in the meeting by video conference with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at MountainView.Legister.com, on YouTube at MountainView.gov/youtube, or on Comcast Channel 26. As noted in the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral comments during the public comment periods for an item by joining the Zoom webinar with a webinar ID of 85300705240. Emails and voicemail messages received by 5:00 PM today were forwarded to the EPC. All votes will be taken by roll call vote. Now I'll ask the EPC clerk to call the roll. Ms. Penalar?
Okay, Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Dempsey?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez? Looks like he's absent. Commissioner Haymeyer?
Here.
Commissioner Nunes?
Here.
Vice Cherian?
Here.
Chair Cranston?
Here.
Okay, so we're missing one.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the meeting minutes from the Environmental Planning Commission meeting of April 202022. These were circulated earlier. First, was there any discussion by commissioners on the meeting minutes? I will. Now we'll open up for public comment on the meeting minutes. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please the raise hand button in Zoom by pressing the star or press the star nine button on your phone. Phone users can mute and unmute themselves with star six. EPC clerk will start the timer and let you know when your time is up. Penalar, do we have anyone wishing to speak on the minute meeting minutes?
I'm seeing no one. Commissioner Clark?
Okay, then we'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Clark?
I'll move approval of the minutes and just note that Commissioner Gutierrez has arrived as well.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Haymeyer?
Second.
So, Ms. Penalar, can you call the roll?
Okay, Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Dempsey?
Wait, didn't hear you.
Commissioner Dempsey?
A hearty aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Haymeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Nunes?
Aye.
Vice Cherian?
Aye.
Commissioner Cranston?
Aye.
The motion carries seven oh.
Thank you. Item four on our agenda is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the EPC on any matter that is not on the agenda this evening. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the commission from acting on any non-agenda items. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on a non-agenda item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Phone users can mute and unmute themselves with star six. EPC clerk will start the timer and let you know when your time is up. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on non-agenda items?
And I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the commission and move on to item number, section five, study session number 5.1, Housing Element Update. The draft 2023 to 2031 housing element. A reminder to people on the phone, we have translation, Spanish, and Chinese this evening. If you're on Zoom, please click the globe at the bottom of your screen to choose your preferred language. If you do nothing, you will hear English, but you will not be able to hear the English translations of the Spanish and Chinese public comment. Before we start, Commissioner Dempsey has an announcement to make.
Yes, I do. Because I live within 500 feet of at least one of the village sites that will be discussed tonight, I will be abstaining from any conversation about that particular topic.
Commissioner Dempsey? I just wanted. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I wanted to know, I'm sorry, I did not. Commissioner Dempsey, also you reside within 500 feet of two other categories, the other non-residential sites south of El Camino Real. This was not included in the last housing element discussion at EPC, as well as a nonhistoric church in our district. So I just wanted to note that your recusal was as to those three categories. Correct?
You are exactly right. I omitted those purely fault of my own. I am recusing myself from discussion of all three categories. And so I will drop out when those begin. I'll come back when they've concluded.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as a result, we're going to have a different process for this item. First, there'll be a staff presentation, then public comment, then general questions from the commission. At that point, Mr. Dempsey will leave and the discussion will include Program 1.2, the community decides for housing, and the site inventories for the general plan village centers, non-residential sites south of El Camino, and the nonhistoric churches in the art districts, as well as the rezoning framework for the general plan village centers. Commissioner Dempsey will then return to the meeting and the commission will discuss the remainder of the questions. We will now proceed with the staff presentation. I'd like to welcome Elaine Yao, project planner, and Eric Anderson, advanced planning manager, for the presentation. Ellen?
Yes, thank you, Chair Cranston, and for the commissioners. Thank you for joining us here tonight. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Is everyone able to see?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so for tonight's presentation, we'll cover some programs that are included in the housing plan. We'll cover an overview of the recommended sites inventory, including changes that we've made since the last study session, which is based on council direction. And I will also go over recommended rezonings and a general plan amendment as part of the housing element update. We have three main questions, which will be mentioned after the related topic is presented, and we'll briefly go over next steps at the end. You guys all seen the site a couple of times in our last couple of study sessions, so I wanted to highlight the main five key components of the housing element. The major inputs are the first three listed here, which include the housing needs assessment, an evaluation of the prior housing element, and a constraint analysis. In this presentation, I'll mainly go over the outputs, which are the last two, the sites inventory, which is to accommodate the arena and the programs, which is to address identified housing needs as part of the goals, policies, and programs. You'll see, I'll mention it as the housing plan. So for the cycle, the housing element document and the housing plan section has been organized based on the lessons learned from previous cycles and how we've reported on our APR. This is. So for the next three slides, I'm going to highlight some of those programs that will be included in the housing plan. And so these programs and their objectives, the goal is to improve and continue the work that the city has in place to support a community for all. So it was one part of our constraint analysis, one of the inputs. We did a quantitative assessment on the impact of governmental factors on development costs. So listed here are some programs that are in response to the identified major cost constraints. I do want to state that it should not be overlooked that the intent of these specific city programs, they're designed to achieve city priorities. So affordable units that come out of the BMR program, and funding and land to maintain quality community park space that come out of the parkland requirements. But nonetheless, these factors are important. They are considered major factors and major cost to housing development. So we need to address them together. And so these programs highlight the program that we have in our housing plan and the actions to reduce those constraints. So for the BMR program review, we want to ensure efficacy of the program, and we want to balance meeting our affordable housing needs with that. For our parkland ordinance update, we want to ensure that we are maintaining high-quality open space while reducing any undue financial impacts. For our zoning ordinance update program, we're going to review and revise standards, and we want to ensure that those regulations that we have in our municipal code is consistent with state law and to reduce constraints where necessary in the process of reviewing development projects. And then the last program listed in this section is the development streamlining and process provisions. That includes finding where we have inefficiencies, where we can improve on coordination within the city staff, and integrating new tools. From all of this, you know, we want to make sure that we're all upholding our community values as part of that. I do want to highlight for that last program development streamlining, I'm sure you are aware, you know, we've already done a development review assessment, which is also known as a matrix study, and that's identified specific actions to achieve this particular program. These next four is specifically addressing affordable housing. We've realized it is a housing need specifically for the city of Mountain View and Metro Silicon Valley where costs are quite high. So specifically for developing affordable housing, there's a lot of high costs associated with this type of housing, and it's very important that we increase local and external funding sources. That's probably through partnerships and any other collaborative efforts, and that's very vital to facilitating this specific type of housing. So the four programs that are highlighted here, they are all there to support affordable housing development and prevent displacement, prioritize funding for key populations, wherever we can find partnerships with the private sector, the philanthropy groups, or any other public agencies. We want to ensure that we prioritize those partnerships to get the resources that they have, that they can all share and work together. The last one, you know, partnerships with actual developers, specifically on city-owned properties. There are additional housing programs that are listed in Goal Two and Goal Three in the draft housing element, and these address affordable housing application process improvements, and then also displacement prevention and mitigation. So you could see here, these are the last two that I want to highlight are the addressing the process improvements and the displacement prevention mitigation. So some of the specifics included in that is how we can improve the application process, improving access through language and information. So people who are unable to use digital devices will also have access to the programs that we have created. So in addition to all of these programs that are listed here, there are a lot other programs that are covered in Chapter Three of the draft housing element. I want to state that the housing element is only just one part of a multi-pronged approach that we're taking. There are goals, policies, and programs that we're ensuring are consistent across all of the work documents, and these programs are targeted to achieve those city goals. And some of those work that's already been done is, or in the progress, are documents like our federal assessment of fair housing. We also have the city's own consolidated plan that was adopted in 2020. And we also have the two-year council strategic roadmap action plan, which has identified a slew of other specific actions that we have in the pipeline. And like I mentioned earlier, we also have smaller studies, including the development review assessment, AKA the matrix study. So for this portion, we would like the EPC to provide us feedback. The question is, does the EPC support the proposed programs in the draft housing element? So just like Chair Cranston mentioned a little earlier before, we're looking for feedback on general thoughts on the overall housing plan, and then any specific feedback on the goals, policies, and programs, and then any input on the gaps that we have in the plan. So the second section is the sites inventory. So based on feedback from the last study session, council and EPC were supportive of the overall methodology. So the site selection process remains unchanged. Where it remains unchanged, which means some of the sites that we previously identified are still remaining in the site inventory. These include sites that reflect the existing residential capacity. They are also reflective of the community vision for development in the change areas and in precise plans, or they were removed if they were historic sites, or they were moved because it would result in high displacement. So that was all previously discussed in our last study sessions. We've also remained the three main categories that we discussed last time. They are the pipeline projects, which are zoning consistent projects under review or approved. We also have a category called rezoning projects, which are affordable housing projects that require rezoning. That require rezoning that are under review, or if they're owned by an affordable housing developer with intent to develop. And our third category is opportunity sites, where there are no proposed projects on these sites, but they have characteristics that would make residential development reasonable in the next eight years. Council feedback also included direction for other site inventory modifications listed under changes. So council wanted us to include general plan village centers that allowed residential, that currently allows residential in the general plan. So those are included. The general plan village centers are, you know, 400 Moffett Boulevard, the shopping center at Ring Store Avenue and Central Expressway, Blossom Valley Shopping Center, Grant Park Plaza Shopping Center, and then parcels near the corner of Old Middlefield Way and North Ring Store Avenue. Council did not direct staff to act on the El Camino Real Village Center, which we mentioned in our last study session, but the El Camino Real Village Centers, you know, by adding it, we are able to capture more units on sites that are currently constrained with a rezoning overlay. So we wanted to include that in the site's inventory, and by doing so, that addresses the inconsistencies that exist right now between the precise plan and general plan. On some of the other changes to the site's inventory, we removed some sites that didn't meet some of the criteria we had. There was an addition of new pipeline projects that came in as applications. We modified, and you'll see in the next chart, we modified the lower and moderate income categories, which we previously presented as combined. And then we did some minor density assumption changes to our projects. So this is our site's inventory summary. This is based on the recommended strategy that I covered in the last slide, and it results in an inventory that meets our six-cycle allocations, and it does provide a healthy buffer across all the income units, which you can see in the second arrow. So as more applications come in, these numbers are expected to change. And I also want to note that this table was updated since the staff report was issued. It corrected the percentages in that second row of buffer. So I want to highlight that staff recommends the site's inventory as presented in the draft housing element because it maintains the framework that was supported by EPC and council, and then it also includes the changes that were directed to us, and also meets the HCD requirements for meeting Rena. As part of our outreach after city council meeting back in March, we sent letters to property owners of the sites that were designated as housing element sites. We also reached out to property owners identified in the general plan village centers, the El Camino Real Village Centers, the religious institutions located in R1 districts, and other non-residential sites. So, you know, just want to highlight that overall, the feedback was generally supportive of having additional development options. But aside from the general plan village centers and El Camino Real Village Centers, we did not include those in the site's inventory, mainly because of various reasons, but mainly, you know, we felt that a lot of those sites could undergo additional analysis and additional outreach before we needed to include them, make any significant changes. I want to say this is, the second bullet point talks about our back pocket list. So this is kind of the last category that we have, but this last category is not part of the site's inventory. This is a back pocket list for future sites that would require additional study and additional outreach to determine whether there's residential viability and whether it can be well-integrated into the community vision. So these include other shopping centers that currently don't have residential as part of their general plan designation. We've also identified a few non-residential sites south of El Camino. They are office buildings across from Questa Miramonte and the Blossom Valley Shopping Center. Previously discussed, we included the downtown transit center in our back pocket list. There's the South Drive area that was mentioned from previous study sessions, and then the Moffett Boulevard, the whole area. We also have in our staff, we also discuss in our staff report a section of not recommended sites. So they're not included in our site's inventory and also not included in our back pocket. These are the nonhistoric churches in R1 district and the nonhistoric government sites, and there's a little bit more constraints in those because we did not get responses from property owners or for the governmental sites, they had other restrictions, like they had other plans and other strategies in place. So I want to highlight, we covered the recommended sites inventory. We also talked about back pocket sites and non-recommended sites. Aside from the recommended sites inventory, there are alternatives where the EPC can recommend whether to include any back pocket or not recommended sites into the site inventory, or remove general plan and El Camino Real Village Centers from the site's inventory, or overall add or remove any other sites, then move them from the site's inventory or to the back pocket. So those are some of the alternatives that you can discuss. We want you to provide us feedback to question number two, which is, does the EPC support the recommended draft sites inventory, including the proposed general plan village center and El Camino Real Village Center rezonings? Does the EPC wish to recommend adding any alternatives to the site inventory? And then I'm gonna go to the last portion of the presentation, which is specifically the rezonings of the general plan village centers and rezonings in general concurrent with our housing element. So I'm going to cover three rezonings in a general plan amendment that we recommend run concurrent with the housing element update to streamline the process for actions that are necessary to be consistent with state law and with our general plan. So our first rezoning category includes the general plan village centers. This would add residential uses to the CN, the CS, and the Grant Phyllis Precise Plan. The residential would be allowed where mixed use is the general plan land use designation. This would apply development standards, most likely R3 or CRA or the El Camino Real Precise Plan, depending on the context of the site. We'd want to ensure that we're maintaining retail. That street frontages are remain commercial, and that would provide public open space. So on the slide, you'll see those five main areas. That would be part of the recommended rezoning for the general plan village centers. The second rezoning category is the El Camino Real Village Center. This would remove the rezoning process that is currently called the Village Center Overlay in the El Camino Real Precise Plan. This would allow FAR up to 2.3 without going through that additional rezoning process. And again, to the left, you'll see some screenshots of those areas. And then the third category is rezoning and a general plan amendment for the 87 East Evelyn Site. So right now, this site is a rezoning opportunity site, and since the city has a ground lease and a potential option to purchase the site, it is within the city to promote affordable housing on the site. So we wanted to proactively rezone this potential city property for future development. And then our recommended rezoning framework would, to rezone it to R4 and a general plan amendment to high-density residential to support that type of development. So again, I want to iterate that we recommend these three zonings and the general plan amendments to run concurrent with the housing element. However, if the EPC wishes to have more review outreach or other options for the reason, other framework options for the specific rezonings, we can delay the action, and they don't have to run concurrent with the housing element. But we do recommend it because it does streamline the process for those categories, especially the sites that are already included in our site's inventory. Those categories, especially the sites that are already included in our site's inventory. So even if they, if you decide to delay the action, we have included a rezoning program in the housing element to ensure that if they're not. Adopted with the housing element, that the rezonings will be completed within the HCD deadlines for rezoning of housing element sites. So our last question of the night is, does the EPC support the draft strategy? For rezoning general plan and El Camino Real Village Centers? And the eighty seven East Evelyn Avenue, or would the EPC prefer to delay the adoption of that specific zoning to conduct more analysis? Does the EPC recommend adopting other general plan amendments and rezonings concurrent with the housing element update? So on the screen, here are those three questions together for consideration tonight. I want to briefly go over just some next steps. We will bring in EPC's recommendation to city council on June fourteenth. After the study session with city council, we will make revisions to the housing element draft. And submitting it to HCD in early July. They will be reviewing it for a ninety day period and providing us with comments. And during that time, in about August, we anticipate having our public draft ER available. And we'll be having a public meeting with the EPC on August third to review the public draft DIR. And after getting comments from HCD, we'll be making revisions to respond to their comments. And we anticipate our final adoption hearings for scheduled for November, December of twenty twenty two. And so that concludes the presentation, and we hope for questions.
Next item will be public comment. I just, one of the things I'd like to kind of pass out to commissioners before we do that, so you can be thinking about it. And discussing how to approach this with staff, there are a lot of items in the, in the program list. Some of them may have, or be items that you're like, oh, that needs to change, but there may be others that you're largely good with as is. If some of you have watched council meetings, at the beginning of the council meetings, they have this approach where they have essentially a consent calendar. And then the, the council members are asked to pick out items that they would specifically like to discuss. I think in order to keep this process moving, I would prefer not to go through and poll everybody at every single program. But when we get back into council discussion, the commission discussion is to poll the members for which items on the list would you, would you like specifically discuss? And we will work on the basis that if we don't, if it's not called out, then we collectively agree with it, and there's no issue with that item. That way, we're not having to go through every single item line by line. Do commissioners, are commissioners comfortable with that as an approach? When we get in through question number one, let's see thumbs up. Commissioner Nunez?
Yeah, so I guess in terms of following this process, as proposed, a couple of questions. Number one, is there room to speak to the general composition of the goal itself? As well as potentially any of the specific programs? So like, you know, is it, is there going to be room to say, hey, this goal itself, you know, the wording is X, Y, and Z? And then, hey, these policies, similar vein, and then the program. So there's three kind of levels to. The way it's composed, and so I'm wondering, like, yeah, what, what assurance is there that we'll be able to kind of like? Have opportunity to, to speak to those three layers?
All right, I'll take your first crack in this, and then if Eric or I don't have any additional comments. We had, we're going to open it up for general feedback on the overall plan to start with. So if there's something, a general concern you have with the overall housing element, that would cover all these things, we'll touch on those first because it may. Influence discussion later. The specific goals and. What are the second tier of, were reviewed in prior meetings? So I guess we were not necessarily expecting that we would be going back through the goals. Or go, going back through the, the level above during this meeting. I don't know that we couldn't, but that was not anticipated as an element of the, of a detailed discussion of each of those goals and the. And what do they call the second level? I'm drawing a blank on it. At this time, is that? Am I, Eric, is that accurate that we, we reviewed the goals in the second level and the policies in prior meetings?
Well, I, I certainly don't want to, you know, constrain the commission from providing their input on the plan. So as you said, I think teeing it up to start with kind of general or broad. Comments on goals, policies, or programs. That could be Commissioner Nunez's opportunity to tee up a concern that he has. And then if other commissioners agree with them, then we can forward that comment or concern to the council.
And then I guess the last thing, the third part of this will be, when we get down to the end, is there something, things that are just plain missing? Okay, things that are beyond what's on the list, and we've gone through. Programs that simply don't, you, you believe should be there, that aren't captured in the thing today. So those, those could be in any category. Does that?
It, it totally does. And just in terms of explaining kind of my line of questioning. The reason why I ask is just because there was like a mismatch in terms of the. Number of programs proposed and the policies. And so it wasn't eminently clear which. Policies were being met by which programs or vice versa. And so that kind of opened up some questions on, on its own. And so just so everyone knows, kind of like the, the reasoning behind that. But, but it does make sense, and I appreciate the, the answer.
All right, then we will, the next item is, next section is public comment. Would any member of the public on the line like provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine in your phone. Phone users can unmute and mute themselves by pressing star six. The EPC clerk will time, will start the timer and let you know when your time is up. It's penalized, do we have people wishing to speak?
Um, yes, we have six speakers. Can you confirm how much each speaker gets to speak?
I think three minutes is fine.
Okay. All right, so I'll start with James Kuzmaw. So one second while I set up the timer. Okay, feel free to speak.
All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is James Kuzmaw. I live in Mountain View, and I am speaking for the Mountain View YMB letter that we submitted. In general, we are thrilled to see this draft housing element. We know that it took a huge amount of work to get it to this point. We do have some concerns, and our concerns are focused at sort of ensuring that our housing element both. Ensures that Mountain View has a good housing plan to ensure affordable housing and lots of housing for the next decade. As well as to ensure that as a city, we submit a HCD compliant housing element. With that said, our. Committing concerns are firstly, that some of the programs lack specific objectives and timeframes. And this is something that many Southern California cities have been dinged by HCD and may not compliant. So for instance, on developer streamlining, it might be good to have specific objectives around. What permit times and turnaround will look like. Along those same lines, we do think that the developer streamlining is perhaps more important than the draft. Maybe that sort of expressed as, many of the developers we've spoken to cite. The ability and ease of working with the city and getting the project through approvals as one of the biggest barriers to development. Beyond that, are along the same lines of having specific objectives, the AFFH. Section feels a bit lacking. We realize HCD hasn't released terribly specific guidance on that. But it is still the case that we are in a city that while we may not have the highest segregation in the United States. We do have internal spatial segregation in our city. There are parts of our city that have significantly richer neighborhoods. Mariano Castro School has eighty percent Hispanic and Latino students. AMI has around seven percent. We should be have, we should have specific programs and goals about improving the integration of our city, and we do not currently have that in the draft. And finally, as a general note, we would. Love to see in general more programs to reduce housing constraints and costs. For instance, with parking, it would be great if we had no parking requirements for all developments, not just affordable housing developments. The reasoning behind that being that if we can reduce the cost for market rate developments, that means that. We will get more market rate developments, and so we will get more BMR in movies, and so we'll be able to build more subsidized housing. And help to meet our affordable housing goals, which otherwise we will struggle immensely to meet. Thank you. Thank you to staff and the commission for all the time you put into this, and. Mountain View YMB looks forward to having an excellent decade ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next person would be Bill Aston. One second while I set up. Okay, Bill, feel free to speak.
Hi, good evening, everyone. First of all, thanks for all the great work you've already done on this amazingly complex. Set of plans and planning in general. I'm actually here this evening to request to be added to the list. I'm working on a project that was submitted to planning staff in October for an informal review. And it includes pro- properties at the corner of El Camino and Castro Street. And it's kind of rare that it's consolidating almost eleven different lots at this time. And considering that the focus of this development is actually to. Provide housing and to build BMR units onsite. We just think now that we're aware of your program, that it would be appropriate that we be added to the list. I was able to submit a letter to yourselves and planning staff yesterday afternoon. And other than just emphasizing our desire to be added. I just wanted to make sure that you received the email letter that was sent to all of you yesterday. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Okay, next person is Salim.
Hi, I'm Salim. I want to thank staff for their presentation and also for the opportunity to speak. I just pulled up some information from this website. It's hcd.ca.gov slash compliance report. And you can filter different jurisdictions for whether they're in or out of housing element compliance. So of the hundred ninety seven jurisdictions, those are cities and counties in the Southern California Association of Governments. Which has the unfortunate acronym SCAG, only six point six percent are currently in compliance. Their deadline was over half a year ago. So ninety three percent of those cities are out of housing element compliance. And the reason I'm talking about this council governments, this Southern California Association of Governments. That those housing element reviews came after HCD beefed up its staffing. They've been hiring like crazy, and if you just look at like the length of the review letters they're sending out to cities, they've gotten a lot more detailed. And so some of the feedback in the Mountain View YMB letter speaks directly to things HCD has sent to SCAG jurisdictions. Like having metrics for programs, having specificity for programs, committing to action and not just exploring certain goals. I also want to talk to another element that HCD has been very explicit about. To Southern Californian jurisdictions, which is like using public land for affordable housing. So our city is, is really banking on land donations from North Bay Shore and Middlefield. So this is all, that, that will be public land eventually. But HCD has been clear, if you have public land, you actually need to have a timeline and commitment to develop that land within the RENA cycle. I mean, land on its own is not affordable housing, right? So we actually have to tell HCD that we're able to build this housing within eight years. If you look at the letter that HCD sent to Santa Monica, it's, it's an analogous scenario. Where Santa Monica didn't actually have plans to develop the, you know, like an actual timeline to develop that land within the RENA period. And I'm worried that this is going to be something HCD will look at. I hope we can, you know, turn this land into affordable housing, but I don't know, it's a huge lift. You know, like, number one, staff, I mean, you know, we, we need a lot more staffing to be able to pull this off. And then number two, I, I just don't even know if we've really put much thought into it. Like, how would the funding work? I, I don't know. I mean, I hope, I'm sure we'll put our best faith effort into it, but. HCD needs more than a, like, you know, we, we will do our best. They, they actually need a commitment and a plan. So I think that's, that's something really important to change, because if we get dinged on that. Then we go above accommodating half of our RENA for low income units. With non vacant, with the pipeline sites. And so there's higher scrutiny on our non vacant opportunity sites, which would be really hard to do. Thanks.
Next speaker is Liz Amber. Feel free to speak, Liz.
Hi there. My name is Liz Amber. I'm here with Mario Amber, and we are owners of nine oh one nine eight seven North Ringstorf Avenue. That was a property that was originally designated on this list. We are asking you to, as you look at the site inventory list and advise the city council. That you recommend that our seat, site be added back on the list. Because it has a potential development of eighty units per acre, you know, without the density bonus. And we're recommending that you could proactively rezone as part of the housing element. And the reason why we feel this property is so valuable and should be added to this list. It is adding high density housing to a location that's good for the environment. The site is very close to Google, within walking distance. It's located right off one oh one. The proposed project would be adding much needed housing for all income levels. Affordable housing would be provided on this site, which we know is very valuable to this community. No government subsidy would be required to construct the whole affordable housing unit, saving taxpayers quite a bit in money. We also believe that this area, well, this area would not impact a single family neighborhood. The site is located right across from some commercial zoning and is not adjacent to a single family neighborhood. The project also has many community benefits. One is that the historic landmarks here, the olive oil, Amber Olive Oil would be preserved. And it would transform an underutilized acre that has two homes. And would bring added addition to the housing element. When listening today to the staff members speaking. We really do believe that, that this project meets all the requirements. And technically, we do have a project that we have just recently pulled from the city. I won't go into details. If you please look in your packet, we did submit a letter yesterday explaining. Why that happened. So please reconsider and take a look and evaluate this site to be added to the housing element. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Robert Cox. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. Hi, I'm Robert Cox. On behalf of livable Mountain View, I would like to mention the letter. That we sent to you advocating that if a village center is redeveloped to include housing. That a comparable amount of retail be included in the redevelopment proposal. In the last decade, it has become typical for those redeveloping village centers. People redeveloping that to start by offering only a small fraction of the existing retail on the parcels they redevelop. If we are to have a walkable community, we cannot. If we are to have a walkable community, we cannot condemn our residents to driving ever further distances to buy groceries, use services and enjoy locations where they can get together. So let's say that comparable retail is what we want upfront now, rather than having to fight for it each time a redevelopment proposal comes forward. Beyond this, I'd like to add a personal note. I'm speaking for myself, not livable Mountain View when I say this. But I would like to say that as we discuss the housing element, we need to determine how zoning for new office development will affect our ability to provide adequate housing for all of the people who live and work in our community. The East Westman Precise Plan, which linked new jobs with housing was a step in the right direction. But we need a citywide plan that identifies where the housing will be whenever we propose new development. Thank you for your consideration on these important matters. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Bill Cosby.
Well, she's getting, the folks have already spoken. If you could lower your hand, that'll help as she's working through the list. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cranston. My name is Solub Cosby. I'm speaking on behalf of the Capacito and we sent you a letter this afternoon. I've been following the Mountain View housing element for the past 20 years. And invariably, every year, the city, like almost all other cities, never meets its projected goals for, for building low income and very low income and even moderate income units year after year. And of course, the reason is the city doesn't build the units. We need to have developers do that. But on the other hand, the city needs to develop policies that will mitigate the destruction of those very same units. And, and one of the the federal and state policy initiatives under the housing programs is indeed prevent displacement. Now, what has made it into our draft housing element is not policies that prevent displacement, but policies that we already have that sort of mitigate the damage to the displaced residents. And in fact, for policies to prevent displacement, the public staff report says that in order to allow time for analysis and flexibility and the consideration of options, the following programs have not been included in the draft housing element. And first of that is displacement response strategies, including replacement of existing units and, and other programs like Community Opportunity Purchase Act. I recommend that we try to get those in. I understand that it's hard to get the staff time to actually do the study session to flush these out, but they are crucial to us providing inclusive housing here in the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Kevin Ma.
Evening commissioners. My name is Kevin Ma. Like other speakers have said before, my concerns are that the programs are missing deadlines and also incredibly high level, perhaps. The item on displacement response and prevention and mitigation is basically saying enforce existing law, which is they're not, it would be worse if we didn't have them. And we can clearly tell from the general demographics of the city that it's not enough. People are still being driven out of the city due to the cost. You know, the buildings that are remaining date back to what, the 40s, the 50s? Like they are in time to be rebuilt these days just to meet modern health codes. And we will need to make policies to ensure that while those get healthier, like the people do stay in the community. And that's just kind of missing. There's also a bunch of other programs in here that just seem to be also state obligations. Like updating to match state law seems like a requirement, not like a, like not a discretionary program. I do feel like the AFFH analysis is still a bit deficient and it's still a little weird to see that just punted onto its own program. There are, based on our school demographics, clear divisions based on race that do, that should be addressed. And how? I don't know. Perhaps because one of the biggest elephants in the room is sometimes we describe the city in two, south of our community or north of our community. That probably needs to be addressed somewhere. The site inventory still seems a little optimistic just because of the general lack of rezoning still. I mean, basically, the assumption there is that we've done, given the past eight years, well enough. And the results have shown that we've not done well enough, that housing prices still continue to skyrocket. Rentable prices still continue to skyrocket and we are not doing enough to ensure that housing prices actually become a meaningful level. I mean, to the rest of us, it seems spending one to two million dollars on the property in the cities overpriced to say an understatement. And really, we are still missing the housing opportunities that ensure people can stay in place, that new people can move into the city and that existing children of people in the city can stay in the city. And we need to be ensuring that is in the center of our minds, that these are homes for people that, you know, would either move to entirely different states or move into Sacramento, anywhere else and just sprawling. And from that, we can see the entire country's housing market has kind of exploded. So I really don't want to see feudalism set in the city and we need to be making this affirmative actions to make the city better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is David Watson.
Hi, I'm David Watson. I've been a resident of Mountain View my entire life and I'm a member of Mountain View YIMBY. Thanks for this opportunity to comment. First, it's, I think it's important that to affirmatively further fair housing, we need to actually upzone the high opportunity parts of the city. That's what the, that's what furthering fair housing is about and that's what we should be doing. Second, I wanted to mention that by the city's own analysis, parking requirements are currently account for about as much of development costs as our BMR requirements. We should be building homes for people, not cars. All of this is available in our letter, including specific citations, as well as specific citations for the the facts and arguments from my, from my other friends in, in Mountain View YIMBY. We kept it to just two pages. It's a quick read. I really hope that you check it out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaker.
Alex Brown.
All right. Hey, friends. Y'all know me, Alex Brown, Mountain View Mobile Home Alliance, speaking in capacity of Mountain View Mobile Home Alliance right now. I'd like to thank staff for calling out all the various historical issues of around 3% of housing in Mountain View. I just wanted to ask that you please, as several other speakers mentioned, displacement prevention mitigation is kind of anemic and that all it is is just enforce what we have now, which is kind of working sometimes. But I explicitly want to ask that mobile homes be included, like by reference in any protections or declarations of protections that we need or could add, such as a COPA. We did just update the trail after mobile homes were excluded before to make sure that people are covered. And, you know, preventing displacement is important for everyone in all types of housing throughout the city. And I'm just here speaking on behalf of, you know, 3%. So, thanks.
Thank you. Speaker.
Eddie Kipper.
Thank you. So anti-displacement policies, one of the most painful things that has taken place and currently seems to be on pause gratefully is demolition of apartments. And the reason this is on pause is a state bill, SB 330, that makes it guarantees a right of return at an affordable rate if apartments are demolished. So that has an expiration date. It is not a permanent policy. So your anti-displacement policies need to include anti-demolition policies, similar to SB 330. But we don't want to wait for the state law to expire. We want Mountain View to adopt this very protective policy. It's not that a building could never be demolished, but it's that the demolition of a building would not displace the current tenants. They would have a right to return at an affordable rate. TOPA COPA should be explicitly studied and encouraged. Why is there a housing element? To provide places for people to live and also to stop people from becoming homeless. And some of the people who are on the very brink of homelessness are currently living in RVs. So adding long-term safe parking would be valuable. I don't know how well that fits into state definitions of housing, but it would definitely benefit the residents of Mountain View. And it would benefit them more if there is acknowledgement that for some people, this is the best option and there should be electricity instead of generators. Be more environmental. And of course, every time that someone doesn't have to drive a long way, then that's another environmental benefit, taking that car off the road. So I would encourage you to require some exploration before the next housing element into what jobs are coming that would require new housing. Another way to say that would be if the current zoning was built out to the density and FAR allowed, what would be Mountain View's housing, jobs, housing balance? And I think that information really might inspire some rezoning in the future. I think it would be a bad story for housing, housing demand of many more units coming of office beyond the units coming in the future for housing. There's a, there's housing scarcity. Building office does not alleviate that. It decreases the demand. It should be studied. Thank you.
Speaker.
So it's Silja Pamer.
Hi. Okay. So I'm Silja Pamer, representative of Green Spaces Mountain View. And we sent a letter as well in collaboration with MVCSP. Part of what we're concerned about is the kind of claim that possibly the public space and parking lieu fees are too high. We would argue they're too low because currently they only provide 1.5 acres of open space per thousand residents. And Quimby Act asks for three acres per thousand residents. I know there's a group of citizens that's already considering a bond measure in terms of a way to increase park space. So we're not asking new developments to like pick up the slack, but we are asking them for the, for them to meet the minimum of the state requirements. So decreasing that would not meet state requirements. And then we have to recognize that Mountain View real estate prices are high and that's what parks cost. And then secondly, we're really excited to see the village centers as proposed development sites. We think they're a great opportunity to increase walkability. Currently, many of those sites are very unwalkable. Like when I tried to take a stroller to the Blossom Hill one, it's awful. So they're not accessible. They're not ADA accessible. They're not stroller accessible. They're not bike accessible. So I think that turning those spaces into bike walk friendly areas with park space and housing is a great idea to supplement that the, the shopping spaces there. We, we love the shopping spaces, but it can be improved for sure. So thank you for including that on the list.
Thank you.
Next one is Emily Ann Ramos.
Hi, Emily Ann Ramos, Mountain View. One of the things I'm reiterating, similar to my, my friends in, in Mountain View YIMBY, is how in some of the programs are not very well defined or specific, nor have a clear timeframe. I'm going to go specifically under the goal two area where 2.1 is subsidized and support affordable housing programs to meet an array of housing needs with a particular emphasis on underserved populations, which is wonderful. But I do know that like there has been specific ask from the community for some innovative programs such as co-ops and TOPA COPA. And I feel like that should be specifically called out. If you're going to call out community land trust, you may want to call those out too, as, as other innovative programs that, that are worth exploring. But also maybe possibly get a timeframe on that as well. But that was just one example on how some of these goals seem incredibly broad, especially in, under goal number two, without really having a timeframe to be held accountable for. The housing element is something that is, is, is supposed to be very specific. And, and the next thing I do want to mention is when you look at our, the housing element inventories, one of the things that I kind of do want to question is that we already heard from two, two property owners already in public comment, asking for their properties to be added onto the housing element. Now, some of these people who have already submitted some kind of application for their properties, while there are some, but they're not included on the site inventory yet, there are some sites on the site inventory that have no indication that they would be doing, that they would be building housing in the next eight years. I'm looking at the CSA site in particular. So I, I would love for the, the planning commission and city council eventually to look into why that would be when we have buildings already, not necessarily ready to be built. I'm sure there's a process to go through, but some are more ahead than others in the site inventory. So I want us to, to put the right foot forward with our site inventory and our housing element on, on, and I'm running out of time, but get the most likely development out of our housing element. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Phone number ends with nine four.
Hi there. Can you hear me? All right. Thank you. Yeah, this is Tony Raz. I'm a resident of Questa Park. I just want to say that I support the housing element with a site inventory. And I just want to reiterate some earlier comments about the need to preserve at least the same amount of retail space that we have today in the village centers. Having the retail close to residential neighborhoods is really important to have these vibrant, walkable neighborhoods that we all want. And we will also reduce the dependencies on transportation. So when we want to visit a local restaurant, the hairdresser, or go grocery shopping. And I would like to ask you that you please recommend that the preservation of the retail space is added to the zoning requirements at the village centers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next one is phone number ending with 51.
Hello?
Yes. Can you hear me?
I don't know if it's my turn. This is Daniel Shane.
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yep. Please go ahead.
You're breaking up just a little bit. Hi, I, I'm Daniel Shane. I am a resident at 213 Cypress Point Drive in Mountain View. And I also represent the Cypress Point Community Preservation Group. And the membership's about, it varies from 50 to 60 people. And these are mostly homeowners. I did submit a letter and I had not much time to do this, but there are seven recommendations and ideas that I have for you, the planning commissioners. And I guess since I don't have much time, but I hope you read the letter. One of the most important suggestions in this letter is based on experience I had with a new housing development and working with developer, working with the city and resident group. And the conclusion that I came up with was that we really must engage the public early on in the planning stages of a housing development. And this policy would require the developer to engage the residents near the project site during the early planning stages, maybe even the conceptual phase of the planning process and obtain feedback on the development and its impacts to the neighborhood that would be incorporated into the project design. And I believe the city and the developer and the residents could save a tremendous, I mean, a tremendous amount of time, money and resources and anxiety if there was early collaboration, cooperation, coordination and communication between the corporate developer and the neighborhood residents. This may be the most single most important policy that may change what is now an adversarial urban land use planning process into a cooperative process. It just makes total sense. There's no reason why that cannot be doable. This is not just a Mountain View problem. This problem is nationwide in many cities across our country. But Mountain View could actually set a precedent and be an example to the rest of the country. I believe the city's role should be to moderate the differences between the stakeholders and help find solutions to the problems that arise in addressing the residents and the community's major concerns. Above all, the city has a primary responsibility to protect the public health, welfare and the environment. The city must address the residents' concerns. That it, okay. Thank you very much.
So no more speakers?
Oh, no more speakers.
All right. Then we will bring it back to the commission for general questions.
Excuse me, Chair. I'd like to take a moment here just to quickly remind the listeners that we do have interpreters and in both Spanish and Chinese. And to see if anybody listening in has any, is currently listening to any of those language channels or has any interest in going over to any of those language channels. If we don't have anybody using those language channels, then we will allow our interpreters to sign off. So if you are listening to or would like to listen to either of these language channels, if you don't mind, please raising your hand in Zoom. Okay, great. Seeing none. Elena and Eileen and Ivy, thank you so much for your time here. I assume you guys had nobody that responded to you or anything like that. Okay. Well, thank you to you three again. Really, really appreciate your time tonight. And have a good evening. I'd also like to take this moment to introduce and promote three consultants that we have working with us. One of them is Bev Beverly Choi with ESA. Another is Evan Wasserman with ESA. And the last is Stephanie Hagar with DAE. So introducing them to help us answer questions. Thank you.
So we'll, you know, open up to general commissions from, general questions by commissioners. Any general questions from folks? Oh, that's one. Oh, Commissioner Hamer.
No, you go first. That's fine.
So I'm, I, I had a chance to watch briefly a YouTube recording of feedback from HCD on, feedback on what they're seeing on the reviews of housing elements in Southern California. And one of the items was the lack of specificity of actions in the program. They specifically commented that use of the words like explore, consider, evaluate the feasibility. Study these items were items that were viewed by HCD as an issue and that they were, that they were generally going back and asking people to be more specific. And staff comment on it, I would, my own sense was that there is a level of that lack of specificity in the, in the programs. And I was interested if staff could comment on, on why that approach was chosen.
Well, we did take, I'll, I'll start and then I'll throw it over to BAE to, to maybe help answer some of that. But we did take a kind of hierarchical approach for programs that we felt were key in addressing sites inventory issues, AFFH issues and, and key constraints issues. We did identify timelines. We also identified outcomes in terms of, you know, improving efficacy and reducing undue constraints. I think the other thing to look at as far as the constraints analysis is that there is a, a, a balancing act that HCD supports with making sure that the constraints are not undue. And so there has to be some analysis that goes into that as we, you know, identify the program to review the, these, these actions. So that's kind of how I'll start and maybe Stephanie with BAE can help add some color to some of the other programs. In addition, we also have Michaela Hellman-Tinker who's in the audience. And she may be able to help talk about, she's our neighborhoods and housing division manager. She may be able to talk about some of the housing oriented programs as well.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. So part of what we're looking at as your programs is, is really looking at it as a, as a package. So it's true that HCD does want to see, you know, quantifiable, action oriented items in your programs list. They are also looking at sort of as a whole, what your housing element is finding in terms of needs and constraints and how your programs are responding to those, to those items that you're finding and really how your programs work together as a whole. So our, our understanding is that there is sort of a, an understanding on HCD's part that not all of your programs are going to have specific timelines. You know, that there are some things that you're doing already that are working that you want to reflect in your housing element and reinforce through your housing element that these are programs that are ongoing and they're working for you. And you don't want to forget about them. You want to commit to continuing those programs. Right now, I would say that your programs list has a, a sort of a good balance of some, some of those items that you're reinforcing your, you know, rent control and these other programs that have been really effective in terms of preventing displacement. But you are also adding some new components to that that are helping to strengthen the programs that you already have in place. So, you know, I, I think that you have a good, a good mix here. But if there were, you know, items that you wanted to consider for, you know, implementing some of these really specific actions, that's something that we would be open to hearing your feedback on. As Eric mentioned, some of these really do require analysis and I think HCD understands that as well. So you can't say, you know, as you're going through the housing element process, that's a lot of work for staff. It's a lot of work for you all to be considering these various new programs and policies that the city is going to be committing to. And trying to do some of these other efforts simultaneously with that can really, it can be almost impossible to try to do all of that at once. So part of what the housing element is meant to do is to commit you to taking these actions where you're not sure what the outcome will be, but you are committing to doing something about it or at least doing what you can to, you know, explore the avenues that you have to address these various constraints or address affordable housing needs in, in these various ways.
Is there any limitation on when those actions need to be completed? You know, when that analysis, I mean, it wouldn't seem that it could be indefinite.
Yeah. So the analysis, sorry, Eric, do you want me to? The analysis should be completed within the planning period. And then the, the programs that we have that talk about doing that type of analysis, there are timeframes for them. So that, that's what, that's what's committing the city to doing them on a, on a specific timeframe. So yes, it's not indefinite for some of the, you know, we're, we'll join some analysis. It's supposed to be done within a planning period, but you can choose sort of when the planning period works in terms of getting, doing everything that the city needs to do during the planning period.
Thanks. Commissioner Hamer, I think your hand was up.
Thank you. And you asked largely the first iteration of my question. And I asked the second one maybe back to Stephanie is, can you describe, I think Ellen was talking about this multi-pronged approach. So how common is that? And given that there are other strategies the city is pursuing for, and our housing needs, to tease those out in separate policies versus try and be explicit and hold ourselves accountable under the housing element?
Yeah, go ahead, Stephanie. Take it.
So I, I think probably most cities have some components that they, you know, keep sort of separate from their housing element and then others that are reflected in their programs. I will also say, you know, in terms of housing, you know, sort of proactive housing policies, Mountain View does a lot. And so, you know, there, this is maybe, you know, maybe a little bit, I feel like a lot of housing elements, you know, you have cities that are really trying to put everything on the table that they're doing because they really need to, you know, demonstrate that they are doing something. Mountain View has a lot of really comprehensive housing programs already in place. And so it's maybe a little bit different from what we might see as a typical case because there are so many things that you can already say that you're doing. So I don't think that it's, I guess I would say I don't see a lot of cities, you know, teasing out, you know, big portions of their housing programs, but it's not totally unusual. And it's also something that because you're doing so much and you have so many different items that are in process related to addressing housing needs, that it sort of makes sense in your case.
Thank you.
Let's hear you.
Thank you. Actually, Chuck Cranston, you had asked the question, my number one question. So that was helpful. I had several smaller questions as well. One was for the village centers. When it's, it's written as providing a minimum of retail, and that also wasn't very clear to me what minimum meant. And as we heard from a lot of the public and personally how I feel is that in order to fulfill the, the goals from the city to have mixed use centers and to have walkable, bikeable neighborhoods, that the retail slash retail plus portion would be increased even. And that we would want to be specific in the language and not just say a minimum without a definition of minimum. And I would suggest that, I know this is time for questions, but if you could just relate to us what minimum was in your mind, that would be useful for any comments later on.
Sure. Well, I can tell you what we did for the East Wisman Village Center, which was we looked at the existing amount of retail and we set a minimum that was commensurate with the existing amount of retail in that center. So that theoretically, somebody could come in and shuffle the retail around between parcels, but wouldn't, the, wouldn't have a net reduction in the overall retail in the parcels. If the, if the commission says nothing, that would probably be our, our kind of analytic framework for moving forward on this and set that minimum in, do some analysis of existing retail, quantify that and set that as the minimum in the zoning ordinance. If the commission has different direction, by all means, provide that different direction.
Okay. And typically you're looking at square footage?
Square footage or FAR or some other similar.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Let's see. Another question. You guys had mentioned bringing the overlay for the El Camino Village Centers in, to be consistent with the general plan. Do you mind just going into a little bit more detail? I wasn't quite clear on what needs to be made consistent, why it isn't consistent now?
Sure. So right now there's a, two separate bonus tiers of, of development that you can do in these parts of El Camino. The first level is allowed, you know, through our normal process. It's just a, an amount of development that developers usually opt for because it provides them a lot more floor area and a lot more units. But it, through that process, there's community benefits and other things that the city can ask for. The second level, what we call the tier two development process in East Wisman actually has a legislative review requirement. And what that means is that you, you're not necess, you're not allowed to just come in and do it whenever you want. You're not allowed to just come in and submit an application whenever you want. You have to ask permission from the city to go through that review process. However, in the, in the last couple of years, the, the state has adopted laws that say if your general plan allows something, you don't, at least housing related, if your general plan allows something, then you don't have to go through a legislative process to make your zoning comply. So unfortunately, right now it's a process that we can't enforce. And so we are just proposing to remove the process from the precise plan completely.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. I'll let other people ask their questions. I'll come back to any little small ones I might have later. Thank you.
Commissioner Dempsey?
Thank you, Chairman Cranston. So one of the things that I've, I have a question kind of about something that I've heard tonight and something that has been, I think it came up a couple of times in the, in the public testimony. And I saw also in the letters was sort of a sense of anxiety and urgency around the displacement response strategy. And if I understood what I read in the element, that this is something that ends up being on the work plan and council for 2023. So multi-part question. If staff can, first of all, sort of expand on sort of the logic and the story behind why there's a delay to developing that plan? And then talk a little bit about what the, what you foresee the plan being to develop it? Like, how is that going to play out under the proposal that we have before us today? And then finally, sort of what, remind us all what measures and protections will apply to renters until then?
Yeah. This is a great question for Michaela Hellman-Tinker, our, our neighborhoods and housing manager. I'm going to promote her to panelist and hopefully she can answer.
Good evening, commissioners, and thanks for welcoming me to your meeting tonight. Great question. And the, there's a couple pieces to your question, so please stop me if I haven't answered all of them. But the displacement response study session was a bit before my time and there were several elements that council asked for staff to proceed on. And so they're, they're going on multiple tracks. One of the elements relates to preservation of naturally affordable properties, which we are currently pursuing. And in our study session that we'll be bringing to council in August, we'll be discussing funding opportunities inclusive of some of our preservation work that we're going to do. The funding for preservation work is somewhat complex and unique. And so we'd like to speak to council about finding more opportunities to take that on. And so we'd like to speak to council about finding more opportunities to take that on. Another element is the anti-displacement ordinance, something along the lines of something like SB 330 perhaps. We received a lot of council direction on that and have, prior to my coming to the, to the city, done some research on what that would look like. Since SB 330 has come into effect, we have a little bit of breathing room. That is what's currently mostly, is mostly protecting tenants and it's, it's in effect now. Very, very regularly, we implement SB 330 through, in a project that is, would otherwise displace tenants permanently. And in the meantime, we're trying to do some more research to understand the, what that would look like on a city level and what would be the appropriate work to bring to council. And that's planned for 2023, as you mentioned.
Okay, so it sounds like the, the research is ongoing and in process, and that's great news. And I understand very much the importance of studying something before you do it because we, you know, it's government, we got to be careful. I would just hope that, that, you know, we're mindful that this is a topic that's anxiety-producing for a lot of folk. And my hope is, is that we would move both in the research and making the proposal with all due celerity. But with that, that was my question. And Michaela, thank you for the answer.
Commissioner Clark?
My question was related to Chair Cranston's earlier. If, do, um, do the goals or the constraints analysis or any changes that, tweaks that we make to that over the next several months? Would any of those tweaks delay the, the EIR? Or can, is the ER sort of separate and mostly related to, to, um, to the specific sites and, and some of the other things in the plan? And, and we can tweak the narrative version along the way?
I would say that it's always good to make sure you, you know, the, the EIR and the public draft of the EIR reflects any potential for physical change. So that's, that's really the kind of underlying foundation of environmental review. So obviously the things that have more of an effect on physical change are the sites inventory. There may be some programs like, you know, uh, the, the Affordable Housing on Turf is program could have some effect on physical change. Some physical effect on that, the community. Many of the programs though, if there are studies or if they are changes to how we, um, you know, provide financing or pursue financing and things like that, those don't directly have physical change. And so we wouldn't need to worry so much about how those get modified in the coming months. I don't know if anybody from ESA, um, uh, we don't have anybody who's on our ERR team from ESA right now, but if you guys have anything to add, feel free.
That's, that's okay if they're not here. I think the biggest thing was just if HCD were to come back, you know, after their review and say, you know, you need to tighten some of these things up, like you need to, you know, do more than commit to having a study of your, your park fee impacts over the next three years. That wouldn't cause us to then have to go back and redo some of those things. They can be adjusted quickly.
Yeah, no, nothing like that, right?
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dickie?
Thank you, Chair. I have a quick question. In terms of the specificity of language, do we need to be, well, when you factor in direct control perspective of housing and protection of those rights, it's understood already that that's a given. But in terms of the housing element, do we need to elaborate on what that would be for renters of either apartment complexes versus mobile home park owners? Or is when we use the word affordability for housing, would that encompass automatically those two communities? That's the first question.
That's an excellent question. I think maybe I'll, I'll throw it at Stephanie and see if she has a, a good, broad response. It's a fairly broad question.
Yeah, I, um, so I'm not a hundred percent sure that I, that I follow, but I think what you're asking is whether or not the housing element needs to explain what, who's protected under rent control and who's protected under the mobile home ordinance, the various protections for mobile homeowners and, and just more specificity on what those programs entail. Is that the question?
No, not really, because I think that's understandable already. It's more of in the plan for affordable housing. Do we need to be more inclusive in our language to call out that if you want more apartment homes to meet, let's say these standards, that they will be able to as part of a affordable housing program that we have now? It looks that we use language that's more like low and mid affordable range as opposed to specifics in terms of mobile home park renters or communities, current renters that are covered by rent control communities. Does that make sense? Is that a little more clear?
Yeah, I see. Yeah, so I, I think, you know, HCD is, is focused on meeting the, the housing targets by income as well as meeting the needs for certain special needs groups that they define. Um, and then they, and so, and those are generally, you know, seniors, persons with disabilities, single parent households. They have a set of, of what they determine are special needs households, large families. It includes, you know, a series of households that have special housing needs. They are also focused on preventing displacement, particularly with the new focus on affirmatively furthering fair housing that's emphasized in this planning period. So, you know, to the extent that we can be clear that certain programs are targeting those specific needs, that's great. That's something that HCD is going to see as being, you know, something that's helping to meet their objectives. I don't know if it necessarily needs to be in your housing plan section specifically. We do have a section within the AFH, the Affordable, affirmatively furthering for housing section of the housing element that sort of tries to crosswalk the housing programs that address the various contributing factors to fair housing issues in Mountain View. And so it talks about how these different programs address the, you know, housing affordability that contributes to fair housing problems. So that's sort of more on the displacement side, but it does sort of tie into some of that. You know, you're having renters who are potentially at risk of displacement and here's your programs that you have to help the, you know, the needs among those renters who might be at risk. So I don't know if that's exactly the, the level of specificity that you're talking about in terms of making those crosswalks between groups that would be served and the programs. But we are sort of, you know, throughout the housing element document trying to, you know, connect the programs and the needs to the various groups where those needs exist and address them through the housing plan.
Sure. So, so at a high level, when we say affordable housing, either at low or mid, are you saying that we're not obligated to point out specifically towards these communities either as apartment renters or community mobile home members?
Yeah, so I would say not, not necessarily in every program. I think HCD is going to want to look at your programs list and make sure that you're covering, you're, you know, covering various boxes in terms of, you're, you're not focusing only on homeowners. There is some attention to renters and potentially vice versa.
And, and the only reason why I bring this up, which is an important reason, and I'm sure the commissioners may or may not know, if you all do, please bear with me here, but there's a lot of members of the community that didn't know. And I'll bring this up when I was supporting Measure B early on, along with the superintendent of the, of the school district. We noticed there were some discrepancies. One of the things that I noticed too was though, the understanding of what renter was. And so the distinguishing factor between an apartment renter versus a mobile home renter was an issue. And we saw that become a, an issue that stayed for a while until there was clear clarification on what renter meant. To the point now that we have included what a mobile home community renter program would look like in Mountain View. That's why I'm bringing that up, so that we don't have that type of situation going on within our infrastructure of how we create policies and how we language them. Because the language, as you all know, is important, right? And since we, what I would like to do is just to have that be placed in the back of our minds that we factor that in, once we come down to the final language of what affordable housing may look like and what it entails. And I appreciate your patience on that. Does that make sense? Yep. Okay. And then my, my second question is, in terms of the persons who have called or written to be part of the process and to have their property included in our lists, what's the official perspective on that front? Is it too late for something like that to happen? Or what's the application process look like for that?
So you're referring to people who, who may have spoken tonight or sent letters that, that have asked to be put on. So those two cases are very special cases. The, uh, they both have, uh, and, and obviously if the EPC wishes to add them or recommend adding them, and the, the EPC can direct, uh, can make that recommendation to council. But staff has several reasons for not including them on the, uh, the sites inventory. Among them are, um, for one of them, uncertainty about the project boundaries. The project goes over several public rights away. And so it is unclear at this time how they would kind of build the project across those multiple public rights away. That may be something that the city can figure out and the applicant can figure out together. But the, the sites inventory is a locations-based. You know, it's fundamentally about the location of the project. And if we don't know the boundaries of the project, it's harder to put it on the sites inventory and to give it a capacity, you know, a number in that way. The other one is a rezoning request that is subject to the city's legislative discretion. And because of that, um, staff is not recommending to include it on the sites inventory because doing so would effectively obligate the city to approve a certain project there. It would remove the city's legislative discretion over the project. And we just want to make sure that the EPC and council have as much opportunity as they, to, to review the project in the future as, as we can.
Thank you so much. Those are my questions. I, I appreciate your time and, and the clarity on that response so that everyone knows what the background story is and how that affects the city's perspective and planning. Thank you.
Commissioner Nunez?
Thank you. Quick questions, or maybe not, I don't know. Hopefully quick. So in terms of the HCD evaluation process, how much are they looking or to what extent do they, have they demonstrated some kind of care about the qualitative nature of the housing versus just the raw numbers of production? So for example, like, um, do they care? Or, you know, if someone, at the worst end, at the most extreme end, if someone wrote, you know, hey, we're going to, uh, you know, do a thousand units and they're all going to affirmatively further fair housing and, you know, everything else is great, but they're going to be rickety and old and the pipes will be rusty. Is that a criteria, for example? I know that's an extreme example, but you know, is that something that would get it disqualified?
Uh, so there are minimum building standards that every development and every project needs to comply with. And so those, those minimum building standards do maintain a, you know, a certain quality of, of construction. We also do have programs that we've included regarding our multifamily inspection, ongoing multifamily inspection program, our ongoing code enforcement program to ensure that we are maintaining our properties over time. Stephanie, I don't know if you have anything to add about answering the commissioner's specific question about what HCD is looking for?
Yeah, I mean, I think if, you know, the example that you gave, if you were to say that, that would raise a red flag. I haven't seen anybody do something that extreme specifically. It's a little bit hard to say what, you know, what that might be in an example that is, you know, more realistic.
May I give it a quick, uh, response? Yeah, sure. So, um, let's just say it has HCD demonstrated that they will reject a housing element because it does not include any qualitative, you know, programs that assure the quality of the housing.
Yeah, they do want part of the housing element to look at substandard housing and to determine how much substandard housing is an issue in the city. And if you find that there is, that there are issues related to that, they do want to see that you're addressing that in some way. And then they also, you know, part of the housing element is also to think about housing preservation. So they want to see that you have programs to, you know, make sure that housing can be maintained over time. So if you, if you don't have programs like that, it is possible that they would provide comments to, you know, ask you to revise your housing element to address those kinds of issues. So, you know, I, I would say in a way, yes. But that, you know, those are, those are things we've looked at as a part of the process of completing this housing element draft.
Awesome. Thanks a lot. So another question. And, and this relates to cycle five, uh, more than even the kind of future forward-looking one. Sorry if it's like very broad, but in just a few, as, as, you know, I hope it's a simple answer, but it's what I'm going to ask anyway. To what extent can staff or consultants or whoever just kind of, you know, point to the, the, any number of key factors that contributed to the failure to produce, you know, the, the quota for, uh, you know, housing at income levels in cycle five outside of just the market rate housing? So if I'm recalling correctly, it was like 340 something percent for market rate, but then like 3.4 for moderate. And then the other numbers, you know, I don't think cracked even 50%. So I, I'm just kind of like, you know, obviously it's a complex issue, but if, if staff could kind of just point to, you know, a, a general consensus of understanding, maybe like top three factors that are contributing to, to the lack of, you know, attainment of quota below anything market rate.
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm going to actually have Michaela start that answer. And if there's anything else that I can add, I think I'll, I'll throw it.
Thanks, Commissioner Nunez. And it's a question I think about all the time. And I was not with the city for the last cycle, so I can't speak from experience. But just broadly speaking, some of the biggest restrictions that I've seen in, in producing low and very low income housing. The biggest one, of course, is cost. I'm not sure if the city would have even had the resources to support affordable housing at the rate that would have met the last renegotles. I'm almost certain that the other funding resources that our affordable housing developers rely on, like the county and the state probably wouldn't have. The state funding is extremely competitive. Sometimes affordable housing developers have to go for a couple of rounds, in fact. So I would assume that was the largest constraint by far is the lack of resources. An additional constraint is capacity in the affordable housing world. Many of the affordable housing developers that we're working with, you know, are juggling several projects with not enough staff to juggle them. And so that's another area where they probably couldn't have taken on all of those additional projects. I'm sure there's also planning, you know, related constraints in terms of the time it takes to, to find an appropriate site that's ready to go. But I would say the main two big constraints that I've observed have been capacity in terms of funding and capacity in terms of the affordable housing developer world.
Understood.
And I'll add, I'll just add another one from a planning perspective, which is, you know, you'll note that really partway through our last cycle, we updated our BMR program to make it much more aggressive on market rate projects. And there's always a delay in actually having that come to pass in projects getting built. So you're seeing projects getting built now that are subject to the BMR program that we adopted, you know, for, you know, four, so, so years ago. So I think that's another part of the story that, and why we can say that we can be a little more optimistic moving forward than, than our outcomes were in the last cycle.
Awesome. Thank, thank you so much. So actually that does bring up, along those lines, I think I, if I'm recalling correctly, the draft mentioned that we have in total about $72 million in our low income housing BMR fund. You guys know what I'm talking about. To the best of your knowledge, at the going rate today, I know it's right now crazy inflation and market, but to the best of your guys' knowledge, at the going rate today, roughly, how many affordable units would that 72 million, if we spent it all tomorrow and had those affordable units would that seventy two million, if we spent it all tomorrow and had those units spun up, how many units would we roughly get? And then would those have to be on a hundred percent affordable housing site? Or, you know, like, how how could we actually operationalize that fund?
Great question. I'm gonna have to do some back of the envelope math. So if you'll let me get back to you on some of that, but I can give you two broad answers, and then I'll get back to you as soon as I get my back of the envelope math done. The first is the below market rate units that are inclusionary. City doesn't contribute any funds. We don't subsidize. So none of those funds would need to go towards those units, with the exception of any development that we would need to subsidize on land dedication sites. The second piece that I wanted to make sure I mentioned is we do know, and we've done some analysis that I can pull up right now, that, you know, based on what we see in our pipeline right now, we have plans for for developing more units than than that covers. Of course, we get more funding every year, so that's good, but, you know, our plans will need to involve finding more resources to to support affordable housing, which is why we've referenced that so significantly in the programs. So with that, I'll do my some math.
Awesome. Two more questions, and then Jose, I swear. Yeah, don't want to back off everyone's time. Really quickly. So in terms of that affordable, affirmatively furthering fair housing requirement, really quickly, what what's like the evaluation criteria that HCD is looking at with regards to whether or not they approve or deny a housing element?
Stephanie, do you want to take a stab at that?
Yeah, it comes into play in a few different components of the housing element. So one of them is the public outreach and ensuring that public outreach is inclusive. They're looking for things like translation of key documents and and meetings and just making sure that you're reaching a broad group. Another is in the assessment of fair housing component of the needs assessment. And there are, you know, quite a few different components that they're looking for there in terms of, you know, the various maps and and charts that that are included in your housing element. And then analysis to go with that to identify whether or not there are issues. There are the programs, which what the the strict, you know, guidance is saying that you need to include at least one program that affirmatively furthers fair housing. And then there's the sites inventory, which is also meant to affirmatively further for housing based on where your housing sites are located. So those are really sort of the four key prongs that HCD is looking at in terms of the AFFH requirements.
Well, thank you. Last question, and these are all the questions. So I did notice that the some of the programs and some of the policies referenced rent control and enforcement of the CSFRA. So I I guess I'm curious. Our rent control outside of mobile homes is not administered by the city. And in fact, the housing element process actually is not even going to the governing body, which is the Rental Housing Committee. And so, you know, given that it is a separate body that enforces this, I guess I'm wondering, you know, what's the, you know, the nexus between having that as being included in the in in the programs, if it's not technically something that the city governs? Or if there's some legal, like, kind of, I don't know what you would call it, like, you know, wormhole or something that is going to somehow allows to to pass it through HCD, maybe because they just don't know this information or something. But I, yeah, I just kind of wanted to.
Sure. I mean, I'll I'll start by just saying, and and maybe Michaela can add to this, but I'll just say that, you know, it's a law on the books, you know, and that's not something that, you know, we're we are going to change. We have a and we have city staff that are tasked with managing the committee and managing the program itself. So I don't know, Michaela, if there's anything else you want to to add on that?
Well, I see our city attorney has her hand raised, so I will defer to her.
I was just going to add that the RHC is actually part of the city. It is an independent part of the city. And there is interaction with, you know, the city council, which does provide budget authority for the RHC. So there is, these are programs of the city, even if they're administered by the RHC.
Thanks.
And I can come back to you with some numbers, Commissioner Nunez. So the way that the city typically supports affordable housing is by funding a portion of the per unit cost. So it's typically about twenty percent of the per unit cost. So it depends on what the going rate is, but I did a couple of options. So let's say that a per unit cost is a million dollars, which is pretty high, but it is becoming more typical. That would mean that the seventy two million would support, would allow us to support three hundred and sixty units, assuming that our funds can be leveraged as they have been in the past. And if we were looking at a lower price per unit, maybe the city would contribute a hundred and fifty thousand. That would be four hundred and eighty units.
All right, Commissioner Gutierrez. Yeah, just quick FYI, Alex. So with the school district, when we pitched in for affordable housing for teachers, and we did the partnership with the developer to get about a hundred twenty two plus units going, which would either be one of everything, like a lot of everything, whether the studios, one bedrooms or two bedrooms. We pitched in with sixty million. And that wasn't considering, you know, the purchasing of land. That's just a pitch in for that amount of units. And then I think this last board also increased the budget for that because it wasn't like it was brought up before, it wasn't meeting a certain deadline, so the cost went up. Just FYI. Thanks.
Any other general questions? Then we will move into the section of the discussion where we will ask Commissioner Dempsey to recuse himself. And then I guess however we, how we get him back here, I'm assuming you, you know how to reach him to bring him back in. So in this section, we're specifically in the in the table of programs. We're specifically specifically going to talk about item one point two, which is the community sites for housing, updating the zoning standards for R one to include nonprofit or nonprofit and religious organizations. So is there any discussion by commissioners on that item? Program? No. It sounds like it's, I will take silence, meaning there's general support for it, unless you say otherwise. Okay. Next item was the recommendation on general plan village center sites in the inventory. So this is the the broader village centers, Blossom Valley, the the site at the corner of Ring Storf and Central. I don't have a mom memorander, but those kind of sites, the non the non El Camino sites. And whether people support the inclusion of those as part of the site inventory. Seeing some nods. I'd assume that's a yes unless somebody says no. Commissioner, vice chair Yen?
Yeah, I'm I'm for it. I'm an I. I just wanted to reiterate maybe that the language of the village center retail is as Mr. Anderson has stated, which means that the minimum is commensurate with what is there.
And I would I would agree with that. I mean, it's a the the term minimum did not did not convey to me what you said, Eric. I read minimum as minimal. Taking the number down to a very small number, you know. Okay, you've got ten places now, maybe it becomes one. But you described for East Swisman is a very different interpretation of that than what I had when I worked through it. So I would, I would definitely I liked that interpretation, the East Swisman interpretation. I don't like the 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 ration that I had, which was minimum. And so I don't know whether other commissioners kind of reacted to it the same way, but that was, that surprised me. Commissioner Nunez, you had your hand up. Can you take it back down? Vice chair Yen?
Yes, I don't know if this is the the right place to to bring it up, but I was curious about the site that's not, I don't know if it's called a village center. It's got a lot of retail now. It's where the REI and Best Buy used to be, the Charleston Center. I was curious if that was looked at by staff and if there were reasons that they didn't include that or if it's not looked at as a potential rezoning.
It wasn't included on the list. The reason it wasn't included on the list is just because it's fairly isolated from other neighborhoods and from, you know, the schools and other neighborhood services. So as a as a a site for new housing, it was not, we we did not recommend it for those reasons. But if the commission wants to recommend another look, by all means, recommend another look.
Is that a general plan village center designation?
No, it's not. But yeah, we could talk about that later when Commissioner Dempsey returns, if you like, if you want to bring it up.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Christian Nunez?
Sorry, I just, I did lower my hand. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that language around the the retail in the staff report right. So yeah, I I also wanted to just throw my hat in on, you know, being very clear in as as part of this, that in those village center areas, those are pretty, you know, trafficked retail sites. And in the spirit of also making sure that we are, you know, maximizing walkability, you know, activation. I I think it is very important to make sure that, you know, even as we are, you know, shifting that to like a mixed use, increasing the housing on on those locations, whatever it is, that that people have some options to to basically engage with with the site. So I would also be very supportive and in fact, very strongly supportive of assuring that it's, we're using language that is super clear about maintaining, you know, the 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 not just like space, but also the the kind of level of retail that exists on on those sites. And and then I also did want to, I I, you know, hadn't really considered much of, but that Charleston site, it it actually, you know, it it does make sense, I guess, just backing Commissioner Yen's, vice chair Yen's statements there. It is close to the one oh one. It's close to Costco. It's close to an In-N-Out. Lot of Heat Island effect there. I mean, it's just like blacktop parking. You know, it's scary to go there at night. So I
Commissioner Dempsey should be able to participate in. So can we, I'll make a note of it and we'll go back to that. So he
Awesome.
So that was the second piece of this thing. The next one is, does the EPC wish to include other non residential sites south of El Camino or the non historic church or art, non historic districts in the in the residential areas in the site inventory on the back pocket list? So I think staff pointed out that there they would head down the path of updating the zoning for the religious sites, but they are not including them in the site inventory at this point. I think there was office space across from Blossom Valley. There was an area that wasn't in the it was not been included, for example. So those kind of sites, does anybody believe that we should be incorporating those into the site inventory? No, 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 no thumbs up. So I'll take that as, no, the EPC is not recommending that we include those in this list. So next item was to support the strategy for the draft zoning for the general plan village centers. I think we clearly talked about the 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 retail area, Eric. So I think there's, there seems to be support for it, but making sure that that language reflects, we don't mean reducing the amount of retail.
Yeah, I heard that from three commissioners. If we could hear from one more, that would be great.
Okay.
Fire razor hand. Christian Gutierrez raises his hand. Christian Clark, are you supportive of maintaining the retail or?
I you have four. I I have mixed feelings about hard number requirements when it comes to retail. I I think the, I think the goal broadly, as you described, is what I would support, but I I think there when you get down to the zoning ordinance itself, it it varies from location to location as to which which services and the definition of retail and those sorts of things. So I support the concept generally.
All right. Say whatever you need on that one. Alan and Eric. Okay. And then the last one was, does EPC recommending, recommend adopting general plan amendments and rezoning for the of the other non residential sites, south of El Camino or the non historic art districts? And so I think right now, the 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 housing element includes doing the reason, changing the zoning on the non historic residential, non historic churches, correct?
The housing element has that as a program, so we would do it at some future date after we've done some analysis and and outreach. What I'm hearing from the commission is that there isn't interest in including those in the sites inventory. So to me, that would mean that there's probably not interest in 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 doing the zoning action, you know, at the same time as the housing element as well. That would be there would be no reason to do that.
Sounds consistent. Unless, Christian Clark?
Just, these are, sorry, things cut out for a minute. These are the sites that staff didn't recommend including, though, right? Yeah, okay.
There is still one of the actions is to, is to actually update the zoning at some point during the cycle for the the non historic church sites to permit residential in the future, but it's but not taking the step of of doing that before the the housing element is completed.
That makes sense, but we'll, we'll later discuss some additional sites where we might recommend doing that alongside the, okay. Yes, I want to make, get get things right here. Thanks.
So I think, Commissioner Nunez? You're on mute. You're on mute, Commissioner Nunez?
I just want to ask a clarifying question. Are we, I, the Commissioner Dempsey recusal just cut to me for a loop. Are we generally in the question number three?
So we're in the personal question number three that's related to the general plan, the the non, the other non residential sites, south of El Camino and the so the item number three was, do we, do we push through zoning changes for these things at the same time so that they're done at the time that the housing element is submitted?
Okay, yeah.
We would, we're not, we would not be pushing to have all that finished before the housing amendments committed. Doesn't mean it wouldn't be a program for the future. It just wouldn't have to be done before the housing elements complete, correct, Eric and Alan? Does that make sense, Christian?
Yeah, okay, cool. And then the reason why I'm asking is because I noticed there was other sites that were in that shaded pink rezone area for general plan village center sites around Old Middlefield and Ring Storf and Central. So I'm wondering, are we waiting for Commissioner Dempsey to return and then we'll go back to that? Or is this the time to touch on that?
No, this is the time to talk about all the general plan village centers, including the ones at Rank Storf and Central, the ones at Rank Storf and Old Middlefield, Grant Park Plaza, one site on Moffett Boulevard, and I believe that's it.
Perfect. Well, then I will talk about it. The reason why is because I think a lot of this, it's it's been very easy to just focus on the south of El Camino sites, but both of those sites, Old Middlefield and Ring Storf and Ring Storf and Central have businesses that are extremely important to the Mountain View Hispanic community. A very popular taqueria, my favorite, and a grocery store, kind of equivalent to ninety nine Ranch for the Hispanic community. And so I'm I'm very curious about, you know, And so I'm, I'm very curious about, you know, what, to what extent, you know, we're able to basically not lose those resources for minority communities in Mountain View? And to what extent are we able to, whether in the programs or, you know, whatever it may be, to to basically emphasize that we're not trying to rezon these, you know, like critical businesses to minority communities out of existence in Mountain View?
Yeah, that's a great question. We don't currently have a non-residential displacement policies, you know, business displacement, you know, or relocation policies or anything like that. Occasionally, on a case by case basis, we, you know, developers will work with existing tenants in order to ensure that they can come back so that they can keep paying rent and everything like that. You know, they don't have to look for tenants. But that is, that's the, that's the extent of the enforceable programs that we have, right?
That's your question, Commissioner Nunez?
Yeah, and I'm wondering, I guess that second part of the question, to what extent is it appropriate as part of the programs agenda later to to recommend something like that? Or is it something that, you know, if if other commissioners agree that we could, you know, kind of send a friendly transmittal to council about? Or what would be a potential action to to basically alert council that like, hey, these are, you know, key resources. We've already rezoned some.
Yeah, if if during the next section, I, you know, I think that's a general enough program, because obviously it would apply on El Camino, it would apply, you know, all throughout the city. I think that's a general enough program idea that you could bring it up during the general discussions about maybe missing information in programs.
Vice Chair Yan, did you still have another comment or? Your hand back up. You're on mute.
I was going to hop onto Commissioner Nunez's comment, but Mr. Anderson's comment gave me pause and I will hold until later. Thank you.
All right. So Eric and Ellen, you have the answers you need for the section before we bring Commissioner Dempsey back?
Yes, we do. Just confirming, we have support for Program 1.2, support for including the general plan village centers in the sites inventory, support for the non-residential sites south of El Camino in the back pocket, support for not including the churches in the site inventory or back pocket. And then the rezoning framework for the general plan village center should have minimum retail amendment with existing.
All right. Can you reach Commissioner Dempsey?
I think he's back already.
Are you there, Commissioner Dempsey?
I'm here.
All right, okay. So as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of different items in the, in the, in the, in the programs. And where we, what I mentioned is we would, are there things that that are, that are broader concerns that encompass all of these items or the areas more broadly before we get into are there certain programs that we'd like to take a look at more specifically? Commissioner Nunez, maybe this would be, I don't know, this, I guess, what you're just talking about would be more of the missing things, I guess, as opposed to the broader. So Commissioner Yan?
Yes, I wanted to bring up the potential for the Charleston Plaza as a, well, not exactly a village center, but an opportunity to perhaps do something in the area to to bring a welcome neighborhood to that area. Is that something possible to look at? I wanted to get staff's feedback on the feasibility of doing so. It's a huge swath of land. So I was, you know, it just piqued my interest.
Sure, yeah, the, we could talk about it with the site inventory, or we could talk about it with the programs. You know, I think if we included in the programs, it would be something like, look at other industrial areas to, you know, industrial or transitional areas to to rezon with precise plans or, you know, comprehensive planning process or something like that. That could be a very significant, you know, task for the city to undertake. And I don't want to try to put words into your mouth, but, you know, either, you could either talk about it during the programs or or during the sites inventory, depending on if your goal is to just add it to the sites inventory or to to study it.
Okay, all right. I see what you're saying. I am going to hold into the site inventory.
Commissioner Hamlin?
Just on that piece, my understanding is that the developer, the property owner is planning for biotech. And the find that I'm trying to bring to this conversation is really what's realistic in the next eight years. And if that's what the property owner is, is anticipating, I wouldn't support that amount of staff work and and exploring it on the site inventory, just knowing what those plans are.
Thank you, Commissioner Nunez. Are there broader items?
Yeah, I guess I'm just wanting to make sure, because I totally hear Commissioner Hamlin's comments. And so are we going to carry this over into our discussion on the sites inventory map? Or is, are we just?
You would bring this back up under site inventory.
Okay, cool. So then I won't kind of touch on that now and with the expectation that we can circle back to that in the sites inventory discussion. I'll let other people go first on this item, please. I'm tired of hearing myself.
Commissioner Nunez, you had mentioned some questions at the, at a broader level. This would be if there's a a broader concern about the goals or the policies. Did you have broader concerns that that would affect multiple programs at this point? Or is that, or you want to discuss it at your projects or?
Yeah, so I mean, I guess, look, my, my biggest concern with the, you know, with the table of programs was just that it wasn't, I mean, I could kind of like, you know, myself try to put a, like which policy would be met by which program, like as an imaginary column next to it, but it really wasn't clear to me. Like specifically, like 1.1 will be, you know, what we use to meet policy 1.3 and 1.4 or whatever. And so like, just going into the discussion, it kind of makes it, I guess, if I want to speak in a positive, like general feedback, I would, if possible, if this is, you know, totally within scope, I would just like to see some kind of, you know, attribution between or, or, you know, correspondence between which policies are going to be met by which goals. That would just, that, that was my general concern around it. And then I guess, is this also the part where we talk about what's missing or just the broad goals? Because if it's only the broad goals, that's just what it was. I just couldn't.
Going to bring up anything that's missing at the end after we've gone through, make sure of it.
Sounds good to me. That is my, that is my broad concern.
All right, then let's start looking at the individual policies overall. And there's about 30 or more than 30 different things. And can commissioners kind of highlight other particular policies that you'd like to, like to discuss, to make sure that we talk about and and look at those? And again, I'll assume that if we, if nobody brings up one, then we'll assume that that was acceptable unless some of you. If you want to remove it, say, I want to talk about it. But maybe to kind of set the, the people thinking, the ones that, the ones that I would just like to talk about were item 1.1 in the programs. Item 1.6, 1.10, 3.1, then 4.1 and 4.3. Those were the, the ones that I had particular concerns about and wanted to make sure we discussed. Are there others that folks would like to make sure we talk about? Commissioner Nunez?
Did you mention 4.1? If not, then I would.
Yeah, we're, in section 4, 4.1 and 4.3. So that would suggest, I didn't mention any in, oh, sorry, Vice Chair Yan? You're on mute.
You had mentioned 1.10. I will wait till you bring that up for going order.
So going once? Or twice? That says that everything else is out. And did you have any others you wanted to add to the list?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm told. And you also included 2.1, right? 2.1?
I had nothing in section two.
Okay, 2.1, please.
All right. One, twice? Oh, all right. So section, so we're, so Eric and Ellen, that's we're saying that the other items, other programs are, the commission is, is, has no changes to those. So Commission 1.1, goal, Program 1.1 is the one on zoning update, updating the zoning ordinance. So my so I guess this is one where I really felt there needed to be some, some fairly specific timelines associated with things. And my, my, my request in this is that we would essentially split it into, split this into two pieces. One for BMR and one for non-BMR. And really to look at the standards, looking very extra closely at the standards for anything that is essentially kind of SB 35 kind of compliant, which is 50% BMR and higher. To look at what, you know, what are the parking requirements, the fees, the design standards, materials, reviews and so forth that go into that. Try to, to really make sure that we, to develop a better standard that, that can be, or more concisely communicated to non, you know, to below market rate housing developers and separate them into, into two pieces. And I would, to me, unbundling parking was not mentioned explicitly in here, but I thought that was something that should be captured as well. So I would, I was, it felt like it was too much in one thing. And I'm, I'm particularly concerned about more the below market rate and making sure we execute on the below market rate. And it didn't feel like that was highlighted sufficiently in the, by having it as a, a single broad bucket. I can say. Other commissioners? Agree, disagree? Adjusting? Oh, is there no other support for that? Commissioner Nunez?
I, I, I guess I'll kind of like, start with like a feeling or observation. I guess like, it's hard to really know what the potential remedy would be. I agree. So I agree that it feels like a lot. I'm just wondering, like, you know, if, if some, like alternate versions, you know, could be like, you know, brought back where, you know, it's like, hey, here's, you know, what it looks, looks like. Here's an option, basically, where, you know, here's what it looks like with Commissioner, with, with, you know, Chair Cranston's feedback incorporated. Here's what it looks like as was. And then if for some reason we could get that back next time and then choose between the two, that might feel like something that I would support. There's nothing wrong with having that kind of like option of choosing, but I, I, I agree that it feels like a lot, but because it's so much, I wouldn't even know how to start on supporting a remedy.
Yeah, so my, my, my request is, I would like staff to go back and look at this item to divide it into two pieces. The one that focuses on below market rate housing and a separate one that looks at everything, that addresses everything else. I'm not proposing a specific, this is what it should be, but it's, I'd like staff to go back and split these into two pieces. To put, that way it puts more emphasis on specifically on the below market rate housing component and calls it out more specifically with the detailed timelines. Commissioner Hamlin?
I would say I support that. I think a lot of the comments that we heard tonight and in the public comment that's been received, really have been trying to get at us, get at the constraint analysis and how we're going to tackle these constraints in a way that is actionable and specific. And so I think the idea of teasing out BMR specifically would make that a lot clearer and and signal to HCD that we have this very, we have, we have, these are the steps we're planning on taking. So I like that idea and would be supportive.
Commissioner Dempsey?
Yeah, similarly, I think, I think pulling it out with specific timelines, that, that actually makes sense. And that sticks out to me as a good idea. You know, I do worry a little bit that the multiplicity of goals after a while, if we have so many, it becomes very easy to lose, lose goals. But that's an important one. And I would support calling it out and underscoring it, as you suggested.
Vice Chair Yan?
I was gonna ask staff if that was something very easy to do for them to just pull it out, just for clarification. I think if we're having issues here on the commission of understanding that BMR is a highlight, then maybe others will too. If it's, it's an easy thing to do, I would be all for it.
Yeah, I, you know, I think the, the action of, of pulling out, you know, BMR, doing, doing exactly what Chair Cranston said is easy to do in the document. I guess one of the challenges that I have is that, you know, one of our, one of the ways that we you know, development standards have certain purposes, and often the purposes are irrespective of whether the units are affordable or not, right? So setbacks or things like that, right? I mean, they, that doesn't, the, the value of that standard doesn't change whether it's an affordable unit or not. You could look at parking, for example, where maybe there is a different parking ratio for affordable units because of some analysis that we've done or something. So there may be some standards where that's easier to do and other standards where it's not. I will also add that density bonus gives a lot of flexibility on a lot of development standards. And they, in particular, apply to, you know, BMR projects because they get more concessions than market rate projects do. And there are, there is more flexibility in our code for densities above the maximum density in the zoning ordinance for 100% affordable projects. And that trickles down to more opportunity for waivers as well. So waiving development standards. So I'll just, I'll say all of that, not to say that there isn't an opportunity to look for BMR specific zoning amendments and standards that can be kind of explicitly reduced in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, well, thank you for that answer. So what I'm hearing is that there are some complications to teasing it out specifically, given the language that you're using for this particular 1.1 program. And that
Yeah, exactly. But the, the, the goal that Chair Cranston laid out, I think, is, is easy to put in the document and we can figure out how to, how to implement it.
Okay, okay.
So would you support that?
Yeah, yeah. If it's, if it's an easy thing to do in the document, and this is just highlighting Yeah, yeah. If it's, if it's an easy thing to do in the document and this is just highlighting to HCD that yes, this is what we're working on. Yeah, I, I'm for it. And I just, one quick clarification, when we submit this, this is the sole document or they're also looking at our zoning ordinances and everything else as a whole package?
I don't think they have time to look at all of our zoning.
I was just curious, but there's, there's a letter that describes what we're doing aside from what we're listing here as well that shows some robust efforts.
Yeah, I, I think it's incumbent on, um, you know, the city to tell the story in the housing element, both of what we, what's existing and what we are planning to do.
Okay, then more so than I would say yes, please.
Uh, Christopher Gutierrez?
Hey, thank you. Um, I have a quick question about the BMRs. I, I, I support, uh, Chair Cranston's, um, idea. So for the record, you've got another supporter on that, especially if it's easy to do. Here's a quick question. For BMRs, and I forgot to ask it the last time, but the functionality of those units, w- once they're advertised at a certain rate for renters to meet that BMR, uh, pricing range, how long, does that have like a, like a twilight expiration date? Is it, does that, in other words, is it there for the life of the tenant, I mean, for the length for which the tenant will be renting there, uh, as long as they're in that unit? Or does it come to an end after some period of time?
Uh, so if, if a project is a BMR unit, there, there are some BMR units in the city that do have, um, end dates. Usually, I think in the past, it was thirty, forty or fifty years from construction. But from here on out, all of our BMR units are going to be in perpetuity. So, um, that's certainly the case of any property that the city owns uh, and is leasing to a, um, you know, a, a nonprofit developer, but also, um, inclusionary units are required to be affordable in perpetuity. I, I saw Michaela showed up. I don't know if you have anything to add? Okay, great. Thanks.
Cool, thank you.
Right, so it sounds like consensus around that. Anything else that people wanted to bring up on one point one? Uh, next one was one point six, below that loss. My specific reason for including this was, um, it felt to me, I came away with, we're gonna have it on the back pocket list and when something drops off, we'll be like, oh shoot, we need to scramble and figure out how to make that back pocket location something that's viable again. And it seemed to me like we would be, always be scrambling and, you know, I, if, what I would, my preference was that there was, that this action became, instead of just, purely updating it, that if we believed, and, and I'm not, if we believe that these are things that we should be looking at long term, then we should have programs to evaluate what would it take to do rezoning of these areas or not. So that if it does come up that we need to move something out of the list, we're not then, because I, I think you have what, six months? Rec, the way I read this, if, if something drops off the site inventory, we have six months to replace it. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Um, that's correct, right, Stephanie? I think you said, yeah. Yeah, so, um, however, that's from, uh, approval of a project that would reduce the site inventory. So we would have the, um, foreknowledge of the fact that the pro, you know, there's a project coming through, like an office project, for example, on one of these sites coming through, that would, uh, remove it from the inventory. And so we, we would have that, uh, heads up. We also have at least thirty percent buffers on all of our categories and I think we're going to have pretty good heads up if, if they're getting drained faster than we expect over the course of the, uh, cycle.
I just, and when I looked at things like the, the neighborhood shopping areas and the downtown transit center, that's what I was, those were things that felt like we would, that we would need to, maybe that's not, maybe that's not a concern. Did anyone else have any worries about that one? That's, that was my rec, it was just the same like it was, we would be, it might be a very short, I mean, it might have a very short cycle to be able to respond to something. That's not a concern more broadly than, well, brought my concern on this. That's the other. So I will brought my concern on this one. Um, the next one that I, I noted was the one point, one point ten, the Parkland ordinance. So there is, some people spoke about it. We got some letters about it. There's some passion in the city about, uh, park space. This, the way this is worded to me, it, it doesn't, it's not clear that how well the linkage into the housing element, would get factored into this overall, to this process. So it felt, I, I agree, I, I love the idea of the strategic plan. I like that. I think we should do that and looking at how it's funded, but I, I felt this, as it was worded, felt like it could head down a path that did not encompass the housing element components into it during that process. And that's what I was worried about is that there's a balance. People want park open space and, and they want density. Um, there's a conflict between the two and I just was, I, um, there was a gen, I don't know whether, I didn't have any specific suggestions and how to beef it up, but it just, it just, it didn't feel like it was adequately capturing the linkage between housing and open space and parking the way it was worded right now. It just felt very, very loose. Commissioner Hamer?
Yeah, I would second that. I think part of what we've seen in, in recent proposals and heard from developers over time and heard from the public is that there's, the park fees tend to be this obstacle and we have this parallel process where we're going to explore how do we do this in a comprehensive manner, but figuring out a way to integrate the housing element using stronger language. Um, to signal that would, would maybe be one way of, of making sure that we're not doing these linked things in a, a separate manner.
Another, Vice Chair Yen?
Um, yeah, I was just looking at the wording. It says, review and revise the Parkland dedication requirements as if it's sort of a done deal. We're gonna revise it. And I didn't know where the conversation was to discuss that. Is that here or is that with Parks and Rec, um, when they do the Parkland ordinance update? I just wanted to, um, ask, you know, about the wording there when it says review and revise. And we have by June twenty twenty-four. So does that mean we are going to revise it? So I wasn't sure. If I can just get some clarification on that, that'd be great.
Um, so yeah, that's a, a good, uh, a good question. I think the, the intent is to, look, the intent is to revise the standards, standards broadly, not, not necessarily revise the three acres per thousand standard. I don't think that's necessarily a foregone conclusion. But to revise maybe some of the calculation standards for how we calculate it under circum- circumstances, revise maybe some of the exemptions, you know, there's plenty on the table in terms of how we can, um, you know, update our Parkland dedication standards in order to, uh, both reflect the housing needs of the community and, and lower barriers to creating housing, uh, as well as also maintaining the, uh, the quality of open space and the accessibility to open space that, that the community expects. And looking for those opportunities of efficiency. Uh, how does that process work? It is going to be driven by the Community Services Department, uh, through the, um, uh, you know, the Parks and Rec, uh, Parks Commission uh, and City Council. I think if you have, uh, the, the direction that you're giving now, that, that Chair Cranston is giving about, um, better tie the, um, the project to the housing element and make sure that the housing element is factored into that project, uh, is, um, you know, good direction to include in the housing element. If there's something else that you think that's related to housing, that you want to make sure is, uh, included in the program, uh, and that would be appropriate to include in the housing element, by all means, uh, uh, recommend it and, and moving forward it to City Council.
Okay, let me think about that.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Thank you, Chair. Um, yes, I support the idea, uh, proposed by Chair, Chairman Benson. So thank you for bringing that up.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Dempsey?
Yeah, I, I'm okay with what you suggested, Chair. I think you're, um, I'd leave it to Eric to figure out exactly how to wordsmith it, but I think it's a, a fine comment. And Eric, if you, if you, if you've got the gist of it, that's good enough for me. But I, so I can support it.
That's the majority, Chris Nunez, Christopher Clark?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Commissioner Nunez?
Honestly, I, uh, I just don't know enough about it. You know, park land dedication, uh, is, is, I'm, is, I'd rather just like, if possible, abstain from making any statement of support or non-support because I, I just, my forte.
I don't know. And Vice Chair Yen, did you think, or?
Yeah, I was just, I'm still considering, um, the conversation and I, I don't, I don't know if I want to tie it directly to the housing element. Um, if it's going to be something that council and Parks and Rec are going to discuss and that's the conversation where it is, then, um, yeah, I, I'll also abstain.
Right. Um, so next item was two point one, Christian Nunez?
Yeah, um, so the reason why I'm bringing this one up is, um, because of that, um, I believe a few people, um, you know, I have made commentary around, uh, the, the TOPA, the Land Trust, that kind of section B around, um, explore innovative programs. Um, so in terms of a, a few issues, um, I, I think in terms of that ambiguity around the language, um, obviously, um, the lack, uh, well, I shouldn't say obviously, um, but you know, I, I have issues with that. You know, kind of not really, uh, you know, uh, strong language. Um, I also have issues with the lack of a timeframe, that ongoing timeframe feels a little bit, um, on a, like, a lot of wiggle room for unaccountability. Um, and so I, I guess in terms of, you know, one of the potential remedies I, I'm thinking through, is really kind of separating that section B out into like a two point two and then bump the others down or whatever, two point one A, two point one B, I guess, um, to make it much more, um, you know, concrete. Because at the end of the day, the programs that are being used as an example, for example, community land trusts, um, those are pretty hefty, uh, programs that come with, um, not just, I mean, we want to make them viable. It's not just about kind of saying, hey, we're, we're doing community land trusts, but you know, um, if the city is really going to be proactive and, and kind of having by the end of eight years, a land trust somewhere or something like TOPA, um, for mobile homes even, which would be fantastic. Um, and I think really would merit its, its own, uh, kind of program here. Um, then I also would like to see, um, some kind of discussion around what mechanisms for funding, um, the city will, um, kind of proactively pursue, uh, to not just have a policy in the books, but at the end of eight years, actually have successfully brought online, um, some, uh, land trust or, um, e- even for like some of the, again, the mobile home parks, which, um, you know, are, are having a spat nationwide of, of, you know, like, being taken over and, and purchased. Um, and, and people are definitely vulnerable there because they don't own the land. Um, so that's my concern. Um, I'd love to see if anyone supports, uh, just kind of branching that out into two point one B, um, and, and having it come back, um, with a little bit more robust, descriptors of mechanisms that are going to be, um, applied to make this not just a policy on the books, but something that can materialize at the end of eight years.
National Commissioners? So I, I guess I'll chime in. I was, um, the, the fact that, uh, I, I did, now that you bring it up, that did trigger a thought in my mind, the fact that it said ongoing when it was a explore innovative programs, I had a hard time understanding. Is there, Eric, is there a, already a project or something in place? Look at these kinds of programs? And as to why ongoing would make sense as the, as the timeline or, I guess I kind of, I, I was not, I, I'm not aware of anything that's already in place. So look at some of these innovative approaches. Are there?
Um, uh, go ahead, Michaela. Thanks for coming on.
So I will say that some of these innovative approaches are currently being explored as part of our anti-displacement, uh, response. That was directed to us by the council during the study session. And some of them were just sort of always exploring for the purposes of different needs that have come up. So for example, there has been a land trust discussion related to, um, some of the anti-displacement work that involves SB three thirty, but, but with, um, conversion from rental to ownership, which is pretty tricky for an individual tenant to, to take on themselves. So they are currently being, um, explored, but you know, more explicit direction is always acceptable as, as you wish.
Vice Chair Yen?
Oh, I was gonna reiterate what you had said, actually, Chair Cranston, which is, I'm not sure exactly what explore innovative programs actually means. And Michaela, thank you for, um, explaining that there was some sort of interest in taking a look at it, but I, I suppose that it, it wouldn't matter to me whether or not it's pulled out of two point one or not, but just as a paragraph or as a sentence, I wasn't quite clear what it meant, what explore meant and where we are with that. And if it's ongoing, what does that mean? So if we were speaking earlier about sort of, um, ambiguous language with regards to timing, I don't know how that, how that would work or fly with HCD and, yeah, if there's a little bit of tightening up of that language, I'd, I'd be for that.
Commissioner Dempsey?
Yeah, I, I guess I agree that the, the language is a bit mi- uh, mild and vague. If it was like research and report on, that would make a little bit more sense to me. And in, in all honesty, the timeframe of ongoing for doing research doesn't really make any sense. And so I guess one question I would have, um, for staff, Eric, what, what would be, what do you think it would be an appropriate sort of timeline to attach to the exploration of innovative programs such that you could, you know, tell us or council what you found and what you think is credible and what, what won't fly?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna send that to Michaela, I think. Thanks.
I have to do a little bit of conversation with some of my colleagues, um, Commissioner Dempsey, to give you a firm, uh, answer, but we can certainly bring pieces of these. And I think a lot of these innovative programs relate specifically to displacement. So we can bring pieces of those back, um, when we come back to the council on displacement in the new year.
I, I think I'll also add, just kind of on the same line is that there's a, um, uh, there's a phased approach here, right? There's first identifying what we want to explore and then there's the process of exploring and we could be exploring multiple things. And so there could be, um, different timelines for each of those.
Is there, is there a expected end date for the, this anti-displacement ordinance? I mean, if that was put in here as the, I mean, it sounds like, because there, there is a project. The reason we wouldn't put that date in here as to when that's targeted, that targeted completion?
Michaela, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, so we are slated to bring back our, uh, some of our responses on our anti-displacement work, both in our August study session, which will be mostly related to the funding mechanisms and in our, um, early twenty twenty-three study session, which will be more related to uh anti-displacement measures that uh like ordinance, for example. Um, so those are the two report backs that we have currently scheduled. So to the extent that um, you know, some of these innovative programs that we've listed and that you all have highlighted would connect to either of those, we can connect those. Um, I'll, you know, I'll be honest, I'm not sure which stage of each one will be at which stage, but we'll report back with where where what we've learned so far.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, okay, so I I see what's going on with, from my perspective, I I understand the issue here, and I I appreciate Chair bringing this up and in general, the the conversation. So I'm thinking, Eric, that this is mostly, it sounds like to me at least, and if I'm wrong, I'm no big deal, you know, nobody's perfect. But um, the language is high level just to capture the essence of new and innovative program so that we can have that language um in our in our plan. So the state sees that we're aware of what's going on with these ideas, and we're trying to do our best figure out how to match, when to match, and how that would work out between the developers and the city and the plans that are presented. Um, it's nothing specific because it can't be. Is is that the idea why you all use that type of language there?
I think that's a good um, uh, certainly a good uh summary of of kind of our our thoughts and why we have the language there. Um, that's not to say that if if the EPC and the council direct uh us to be more specific, we couldn't add more specificity.
Sure. And and so then, I'm glad you brought that up, but in 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 the experience so far that we've had within the city, is that something that EPC would take on now, like now in this meeting? And bring that up or in the joint session with city council? Because I thought we had a joint session one, but I'm not sure if I misread that. Wha- what's your best suggestion for an approach to how to delve into?
So I I think the um, you know, what I've heard from a couple of commissioners, Commissioner Nunez, um, you know, identify more ma- more mechanisms for outcomes and timing. Uh, what I heard from um Vice Chair Yen was uh more language around what explore means. Uh, I think those are all things that we can uh um, that that's direction that we can take and and integrate into the housing element. Um, you know, if the council, if a majority of the commission and council uh support that uh going in that direction. Um, I don't think the commission is being asked to set a specific uh, you know, to or or needs to set anything specific in the in this meeting uh for for how that would happen. I think the direction, the general direction is adequate.
Okay, all right. I I just want to make sure that we don't overstuck our boundaries in terms of, you know, advice and then not advice, but a directive of some sort, because we're all team players here, so we want to make sure we we this process right. Thank you.
I guess a question for Michaela and other commissioners. Is it, would it be reasonable to include something in the timeframe that says, you know, report out, you know, recommend viability recommendations associated with land trust and other options? In when's your, when's your twen- early twenty twenty-three, first quarter twenty twenty-three or something like that? So that's it's an existing program, but it's calling it out, so that it's more, is that consistent with what you're doing with that?
I would defer to um Michaela on this question.
Thank you, Chair Cranston. We don't currently have direction to do that exactly. Um, so I I sort of deferring to their elected bodies, but that's something you'd like us to, you'd like to recommend that we do. I think that that's something we would carry forward. Is that right, Eric? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a- all of this direction would ultimately be coming from the council, and if the council wants to set those timelines and and um set those goals, then that then the the housing element is a tool to do that.
Commissioner Nunez, you're nodding your head.
Yeah, so um, I I guess the 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 high level intent is not to just um put words in, and I'm not saying this is going on, um, you know, but I have a very risk management and and kind of like, you know, type of brain. Um, you know, what I, my intent is, I, you know, I I would not want to um put words on a housing element um that have very little um kind of like viability towards actually kind of jumping out of the paper and becoming something real. Um, and so when I'm, you know, I I I guess other like potential ways of thinking to this is like um, I I think uh what you last mentioned, uh Chair Cranston, around like, hey, if we're gonna keep uh, you know, section B in, you know, two point one, then, you know, why don't we also potentially recommend that, you know, we we do have y- you know, some end date to when that exploration is complete. That way we can know um not by cycle seven um whether or not land trusts are viable in our city. Um, or if we are serious about land trusts, um, then we should uh, you know, have a more robust uh, you know, kind of goal around that that includes uh, you know, potential actions around like mechanisms. Um, you know, there are groups already in Mountain View, like the solidarity fund, for example, um, who are really looking for um an opportunity to uh get rolling on a land trust or a type of TOPA type uh situation. Um, our mobile home residents are also um very much an organized entity and very much could actually take advantage of a land trust type model. Um, and so what I'm, you know, throwing out there is, if we're going to put language like this in the goals, um, and if there are people in our community that are actively working on this and ready to pounce on an opportunity like that, then we should give them the tools and the avenues to make that a viable outcome. Um, as opposed, we should maximize what we do to help them make it a viable outcome. Um, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work out, but a- at the very least, you know, we as a, you know, body politic have given them uh the most realistic path that we could to actually having a successful outcome. Um, so that's where I'm coming from on that.
I basically agree with that. We're gonna put it in, need to do something, and right now it doesn't read like we're ongoing to me doesn't say we're doing something. But I will be very honest, I do not understand community land trusts or COPA or POPA or any of it. And so I don't know whether it's a good idea or a bad idea or or what. So uh I'm not the person to decide whether they're the right programs.
Vice Chair Yen?
Um, yeah, I agree with what you guys have been saying, and I think when, I wasn't trying to nitpick uh wordsmithing, but it's just um when Michaela had mentioned that there was exploration, that to me was already new information, because I I wouldn't know that. And just by saying that, you know, for a certain project, we looked at this, and there has to be some facts and information that come out of that. Maybe it's just, you know, by a certain date, we have a report on this feasibility on certain projects. So that I think people are aware that we are actually exploring. It it just, as it stands, the way it it's put out there is, that's something we'll just kind of look into, which could vary from someone doing a Google search to actually having a group ready to go talking to landowners or, sorry, not, well, landowners and uh potential community members who are willing to, you know, put some money down or get going on that. So it's just such a wide range, it it almost, like Chair Cranston said, it's it's hard to understand what that meant. So um, I understand the high level exploration, maybe just having an end product since you already have one, and then a date and perhaps discussing what other uh studies you've done already and what further studies you might be doing um moving forward. That's all.
Did we lose the chair?
I think he's dialing back in, it looks like.
Okay.
Sorry about that, I lost my phone, so I'm back. Um, Christopher Clark?
Yeah, just briefly, like, I generally agree that like there's a balance to be struck here. You know, on one hand, this is a a multi-year document that's going to last a long time. It's going to have to survive a number of councils who can change policy direction at any time. So you you don't necessarily want your your multi-year plan to tie the hands of future councils, but you also want to demonstrate to HCD that, you know, you're committed to certain things. And so I I think for me, you know, do we need to say that this thing will be done by February twenty twenty-three? I I think that's probably a little bit too specific for this type of document, but if we want to talk about you know, the the things that are already in process, the the things that council has already agendized or or put in their goals and and are planning to do in the next two years, you know, maybe there's um maybe there's a balance to be struck there where we're a little bit more specific than we are today, and we're addressing these concerns, but we're not so overly specific that we end up in a world where, you know, a different council two years from now decides to shift gears, and then you know, HCD is like, why didn't you do this thing that you wrote down two years ago that you were wanting to do? So I I think there's probably a balance to be struck here, and I think I I'm generally on board with with folks and uh the suggestions of tightening things up and being a little bit more specific about some of the things we're doing now and that council has already decided to do or is in the, going in the direction of doing over the next few years. I just don't want to get um, so specific that we're in a world two or three years from now where there's something written in a in a, in a housing element, uh, and we're uh, we're actually in a worse spot than than we would have been had we sort of struck this balance early on.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Yes, um, I agree with uh Chris's perspective. That makes sense to me. Thanks.
So Eric, Ellen, does that give you not agree with, would I say something where she's a vic where doesn't have to be hard dates? I mean, Christian Nunez, is that you wanted it, is that acceptable to you, that kind of approach?
Um, I, you know, that's up to staff's discretion. Um, again, like given that I actually know people are actually working on this, um, that it matters to people. Um, you know, I I just don't want it to be like a, you know, parentheses such as, et cetera thing that, you know, doesn't have like a um a firm date, for example, or 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 some sort of, you know, we promise we will get back to, you know, the council and EPC, the community on, hey, we did explore it. Um, it wasn't an ongoing thing, um, and here's what might need to happen. Um, all we gotta do is give people like a little opening. Um, people are working on it, um, people are smart, and um, that's that's really where I'm coming from on that. So um if staff feels like, based on the uh feedback um that the commissioners have provided, that that, you know, there's enough there that makes sense, um, then I would feel good about that. Um, otherwise, you know, if if people don't support a little more specificity on that, then, I mean, that's fine too. Um, but again, given how much people are actually working on this, um, I I definitely wanted to make sure I uh brought it up as a as such.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing in general, sorry, Chair Cranston, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Eric. I'm sorry, I didn't see the Commissioner Gutierrez had his hand up.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Yeah, no, I I don't mean to prolong this. So I have a quick question, having heard Alex's perspective of members of the community working on this. So in your experience, Eric, at this point in time, if there are members of the community who are exploring this and are interested in this, is there, is um, are they able to approach the city council on this now? Um, are they able to speak to them about these issues now? Or will they speak to us? Or do they speak to somebody in the city? Uh, because we're here to help out. So I'm wondering, is there a way for them to take action uh now in general?
Yeah, uh, good question. I'm gonna defer that to Michaela.
We'd certainly be happy to talk with any of these groups. I'm always looking for partners uh to to push us with innovative ideas. So absolutely. Uh, if anybody is talking to someone who hasn't uh spoken to the council or city staff, please connect us. Um, you know, we're not bound to do things the way it's always been done. So we're happy to explore new ways of doing things with folks, and a- as I said, we've been exploring some of these options. So I I'd love to very much love to connect with some of the groups that Commissioner Nunez mentioned and um anyone else folks have been talking to or who might be listening.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. I think that helps out a lot so that we can have a greater understanding of what the process is like and how you can access it and, you know, try and make a difference. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add that um, you know, I'm reachable on the on the website. The commissioners know how to reach me. Um, and you can always email neighborhoods@mountainview.gov.
Thank you, Michaela. Thank you.
Mr. Nunez?
Thanks. Yep, so um, definitely, uh, Michaela, I can definitely put you in touch with people, number one, absolutely. Um, you might be getting invitations pretty soon. Um, and second, uh, I do want to point out that anyone can go to council and talk about anything they want at any point in time. That does not preclude us from also taking actions that could support the efforts that they would go talk to council about proactively. So if people, you know, um, if if the commission wants to go ahead and ask for a little more specificity on that land trust piece, I think that would be a great bone to throw people that are already, you know, wanting and craving something like this. If not, then, you know, I'm happy to move on and kind of leave it there. But again, if if that's something that the commission feels is any bit worthwhile, then, you know, we can hear from staff if that's something that would throw them completely out of the loop on this or or make their lives miserable, then maybe it's not worth it. But, you know, if it's something simple enough, then um yeah, I I I don't see why we wouldn't just throw throw the people a bone.
Good. Um, Eric, I'm struggling with how to kind of consolidate this into
Yeah.
recommendation.
I I I guess I kind of heard two separate um um issues with the existing language or kind of directions to go. One is specifically about um, kind of making the uh the tasks more explicit, like the existing tasks, like what are the, what are those things that we're doing to explore? Uh, so so making those more explicit, and maybe that could also include um more detailed outcomes of what what comes of this process. Um, so I think I definitely heard that from a majority of couns- of commissioners. Uh, what I did hear from a couple of commissioners and maybe not a majority is um if we are going to add things into this um that are maybe not there, then just let's focus on things that the council has already prioritized or identified. Um, and then um, uh, I I think that's kind of what I heard from kind of the two biggest groups. Was there anything that else that people heard from multiple commissioners that I'm I'm missing?
Oh, I think good.
Okay, do we have a a majority of commission uh in favor of looking at what council is doing and maybe adding other um exploratory items to this list based on what council's already doing? Or was that not part of the commission's recommendation?
Quite frankly, I don't know what I don't know. So so I like, I agree with the first one, but I don't, I guess that I don't understand land trust. I don't understand COPA and POPA really. I don't know what the implications are to the city of saying we're gonna do these things. I don't know if this, I I didn't get the sense the council has said yes at this point or something. So I'm reluctant to go that next step till that they've gone through that process. I agree with Christopher Clark that putting putting something in here at this point that says we're gonna do something, and when I don't, I don't know what it is, I would be uncomfortable with that.
Vice Chair Yen?
Yeah, I'm I'm with you on um the former of the two options that you had said. So I I I'm voting for for that. Um, if it is, and I I understand Commissioner Clark's point, we're not trying to make things difficult. It's just if there's a little bit of language to put in with whatever you've already done and what could be done, then let's do it if it's easy to do.
Sounds like your assessment is correct.
Okay.
Consensus around capturing the first, but not consensus around.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
All right, um, next item that I noted was three point one, and this is kind of more of just a general question. The safe parking program is mentioned numerous times throughout the housing element, but not in any of the actions. And that kind of came up in the, in the discussion. Is is safe parking program something that HCD views as a component of a housing program?
Uh, I I don't know if Stephanie, you can respond to that?
Um, I wouldn't say that that's something that HCD is specifically looking for cities to do. Um, they are looking for cities to address various types of housing needs, including, you know, potentially for people who are at risk of homelessness or um, are currently homeless, which, you know, in terms of the census definitions, some of your population that's living in RVs would would qualify under that. Um, but in terms of, you know, HCD isn't saying that you need to have a an RV uh, safe parking program. That would be something that you you could do as um, as one of your programs. And I don't think that they would frown on it, but it's not a requirement.
I guess my question is that we're doing it now, the things that are outlined as the actions in three point one. Me, the safe parking program would fall into one of those things that we're doing. And I like the program myself. I think it seems to be working. But I have no idea if, I don't have a sense where their councils decided they want to get rid of the safe program, parking program at one point, some point or another, or or not. So I guess it was a question, should safe parking be incorporated into this as one of those components? It's available to prevent households becoming permanently host to homeless and providing a safety net shelter and housing for those that are unhoused. So it just, it felt like one of the tools that was available to us and it was missing from the the things. Whether people, I don't know that people found what the safe parking program should be trying to incorporate it. Mr. Dempsey?
I just, simple question of staff, is there a reason not to include it?
Uh, Michaela, do you have a idea about that?
Well, first, I'll just point out that safe parking is included in um, policy three point one, which I realize is different from program three point one. Um, so that's part one. I also know, and I'm not an expert on this, that many of the safe parking leases um, have an end date at this time. So I think that might be a reason to be thoughtful about whether or not to include in the programs. But um, it is referenced in the policies.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I was gonna say the same. In terms of programs, I think the issue is that a lot of those leases and they have specific end dates. Not that they can't be extended, but there may be, things may shift around where where council may decide to utilize or the property owner frankly may may decide to use those um, lots for different purposes. And that's not to say that council couldn't find different locations for those things. But I don't think there's any, um, I don't think there's any guarantee um, that that's gonna continue for the next ten years, for example, and literally a permanent program. So I I think in in that respect, I just wouldn't want to be similar, similar to the prior discussion. I wouldn't want to be in a position where we've committed to having safe parking for the next ten years. And three years from now, the leases expire, the property owners aren't interested anymore, or, you know, council has decided to do something else with those lots. Because the, um, in the unlikely event that, you know, um, um, there isn't as much of a need then as there is now for those types of things. Um, I don't know. I I just think that's why it makes more sense as a policy as opposed to a program from my perspective.
All right, um, I guess the the fact, the life moves site that we have have is only is only an eighteen month thing, but but we've got it in here was one of the reasons that I guess in my mind, short-term things were were already being included. But if it's in the, I I didn't go back and look at the policies, if they're already, then that's fine. I will. Yield on that, Commissioner Nunez?
Yeah, so um, in terms of life moves, I I guess, quick question for staff. Um, it, they're managing our safe parking sites as well as the, um, is it room key or home key? Out over by um, Lake Horn, I believe.
So Life Moves is managing the home key site on Lake Horn. Um, the the managers of our safe parking sites is Move Mountain View.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so unless there's any other questions on three point one, I'll move on to the next one. Yeah, um, next one was item four point one. This is the one that goes through streamlining the development process. I don't know how many of the commissioners read the uh, the letter from um, uh, the League of Women Voters, but I thought that the the description of what they listed under four point one of the things that needed to be part of a of a BMR housing approval streamlining process was like, wow, I, that's what I would have written down. And um, and putting a specific goal of being able to approve a below-market rate development in twelve months or less in my mind should be something we should be aiming for. So I, I would, uh, another ones where uh, maybe it's, because right now you've got the um, B is a, B is a separate piece, the the software tools are another piece. Uh, but putting in place a very specific streamlined SB thirty-five-like process for BMR housing is something that I think is something we should work towards and uh, would like to see is not just, it shouldn't just be ongoing. We should have a target uh, of bringing that number down. I think it's typical right now is about eighteen to twenty-four months for an approval of a project. And for BMR housing, I'd really love to see it tightened up and get into a much, um, a much more aggressive number uh, specific. I liked what League of Women Voters listed as the, as the things there. And that felt like to me a good framework for a BMR housing process. What do other people think? Mr. Haymeyer?
Yes, I agree. I think um, a lot of what they listed is spot on. I I don't know in terms of staff capacity, if if that turnaround time is actionable. Um, but I think in terms of setting a target that we would want to hold ourselves accountable to, that makes sense. And the piece I only observed this afternoon, and I wish I had had a better chance to dig into it, was the matrix report on um, that had been done, I guess it was in twenty twenty-one. So I just don't feel like I've read that well enough to understand what some of their recommendations were. Um, but I agree that this is an area where I'd like to to see some more specificity added. And starting with the League of Women Voters, depending on how other commissioners feel, would be would be one place. And and with more time, I could look at that matrix report and see where there's other overlap.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Yeah, no, I I agree with that approach. When I read the letter, I thought it was pretty uh, spot on. The League is always pretty good at being able to provide, uh, girls, excuse me, that's okay. Um, my two daughters are with me here, apologies. Um, but uh, yeah, when they write something, a recommendation or a letter with suggested ideas, they always provide some top-level notch perspective, so I agree with that.
The commissioners? Christian Nunez?
Yeah, um, I I definitely also agree. Um, I very much appreciate the League of Women Voters' recommendation. Um, I'm happy to totally go with that. Um, as an aside, I think um, in terms of metrics, just one thing that um, in an ideal world, probably doesn't have to be this cycle. But I, you know, I, in terms of the streamlining, I definitely would like to understand um, kind of like metrics of improvement at some point. Um, just for any, all consideration around like, you know, what were the appreciable gains of the streamlining? Like, you know, our um, development, uh, you know, from our our days from an an application being submitted to uh, you know, the project being approved was X days for this, you know, um, type of zoning. And and now the streamlining resulted in, you know, this many fewer days. Um, if I'm missing that as as part of it, um, then, sorry. Um, but, you know, again, I'm I'm totally comfortable with leaving it at the um, the other, uh, that League of Women Voters uh, feedback. Just um, sharing some food for thought for anyone that that would appreciate that.
Mr. Ian?
Um, I'm with Commissioner Haymeyer. I didn't get a chance to review the whole document very thoroughly. Um, I think it came in a little bit uh, later. I got it later than, or I saw it later than um, I would have liked to. So um, I I agree, streamlining is something we definitely need to look at. Because I didn't look at it, I I don't have the ability to make a a determination on that. I also don't know if by streamlining the BMR, we're streamlining the entire project. Because very often with the BMR, we have the market rate as well. And I just don't want to see that, you know, we're sacrificing quality of the whole in order to streamline just that portion. Um, so I I don't know enough about it. I I'd like to take another look.
For clarity, I'm not advocating that the only, I'm talking about hundred percent BMR projects as a streamlined SB thirty-five process. Not, I'm not suggesting that we would review the fifteen percent BMR part of a bigger project in at a different timeline. It's, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be confusing.
No, no, that's okay. Thank you for clarifying. Um, again, it would just go back then to the one comment, which is, I didn't get a chance to really look at it. So I am going to abstain from speaking about it.
Mr. Dempsey?
Yeah, I I guess I would just say, generally, I think this one's really important. And this is a place where I would like to see some more specificity. I am not gonna prejudge how exactly, you know, how exactly you fix this. But um, I I would like to see more specificity because I think this is one that kind of deserves, uh, you know, bold and underscored uh, for staff. We gotta get this one right.
Now, Jeff, here, I I was also gonna bring up the 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 matrix study. Um, you know, that actually had very specific time, time points in it, recommendations. Some of those, I believe, are already coming um, by the uh, have already been put forward and are gonna be included in some of the next budget, the the next budgeting cycle uh, with council. So council is is taking a look at that. So to me, the matrix study was an improvement of the overall process, streamlining for everybody. And so I would agree with Commissioner Haymeyer that, you know, what's that? What's, you know, what's council looking to try to do there is for general? But then taking the further step of where it's a hundred percent BMR project, you know, let's, let's give it its priority, you know, do the expedited reviews is 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 kind of what I'm advocating. Don't have, we heard from, we haven't heard from Krishna Clark or Mr. Gutierrez at this point? Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I think, I I know I sound like the the conservative here, but I I view the housing element as like a very high-level plan. And then I view zoning ordinances and, you know, uh, two to four-year council goals is like the actual implementation and deciding how to effectuate those things. And um, so it it just seems really strange to me to commit to very specific timelines in a, in a um, a multi-year plan. But that's not to say that we shouldn't shoot for those goals and and list them, right? So I, for example, would be perfectly fine with saying, you know, we have a goal of reducing the average amount of time it takes a hundred percent BMR project to get from, to go from application to approval. Whether I would say it will be less than a year in in this high-level document, I'm I'm not sure I would say that. But but I'm also fine with saying, you know, our goal is to reduce, you know, the number, the amount of time it takes for this whole process by, you know, twenty percent or whatever the number, whatever makes the most sense. And oh, by the way, you know, we've already started this process through this, through this um, matrix study that's going on that we're going to review next year. Like, those would be the sort of things that, you know, I would think we want to highlight to HCD. Um, it it just makes me nervous when we, um, and I, and I, as much as I love the League of Women Voters, I'm not sure I could sit here tonight and and endorse the entire letter that they sent. Because I I did read through a lot of those points I had, yeah. Uh, but but I I did, I did, I did agree with a number of the items. I think I I would just want, you know, a week or so to actually review all of the recommendations there. So I guess that that's where my head's at. Like, I, 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 I generally don't like putting like very, very specific things in multi-year documents. But I, but I think it's perfectly fine to commit to wanting to, you know, reduce certain things or streamline certain things or indicating that, you know, that's something we're planning to do. And oh, by the way, we're already in the process of doing it.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Yeah, and I think that's the challenge, right? When you work as a team with a multi-year document, you have to understand, like many of us do, that this isn't just uh, here and now, but you know, let's throw a bone at it. Doesn't work like that. Because it's not just up to us, it's up to council to approve, to buy in. And I think at this point in time, having had this experience at the school board level with multi-year documents, I I agree with Chris. There's also legal liability issues there, too, that we don't want to get ourselves involved with in general. You commit to yourself the one thing, and then, once the state realizes that that didn't happen for whatever reason, there's always follow-up, right? So I I agree with Chris's perspective on this, on this, on this one.
It sounds like there's consensus on, we should be more specific about streamlining. Um, not good at the level of putting in a six-month or nine-month or twelve-month or whatever, any kind of specific date. Um, but is there support around that? It certainly um, sounds like there's support around what people know of the matrix document and what council's doing there. But obviously, they're not all well-informed of it. Um, is there support for, I don't, I wasn't clear if there's support for a hundred percent BMR expedited process that for staff to to look at developing a a a BMR expedited process or not? I haven't heard that that's, I'm not, I'm not clear on whether that's. Are people on board with, I think Commissioner Haymeyer was, but I didn't get a sense for others whether the idea of having a separate expedited process for BMR or not, I didn't get a sense on that. Mr. Gutierrez?
And I I agree with that perspective, Sheriff. I think that makes sense. It's something that we could do and highlight. And I think it's a good opportunity to be able to, you know, make that happen and have that be explained a little bit more.
Others, I see a thumbs up from Krishna Clark, um, Mr. Dempsey, yes, no, thumbs up. Uh, Christian Nunez, thumbs up? Okay, all right, so that clear, Eric?
So what I heard was, uh, be more specific about um, the the streamlining um, and uh, you know, reducing review times uh, as well as prioritizing a uh, expedited process for BMR or for affordable housing projects, hundred percent affordable projects.
Yep.
Okay.
Good, um. Then the um, last one that I highlighted was four point three. I don't know what other people thought, but it sure read to me like, there are a lot of these things that were, oh, and we're gonna need to put money into it, and oh, we're gonna need to put money into it, and oh, we're gonna need to put money into it. And I didn't, there's nothing in here that says where that, you know, I think Michaela was, you know, I kind of articulated what we're getting. The reason I asked the question and the of staff early on is to try to understand the variability. Um, the amount of BMR funds that came in looks like it's, there's a, you know, a a four X difference from one year to the yet the next possibly, you know, from ten, ten million to more than forty million.
Chair Cranston, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I I I know that vice chair had her hand up. I don't know if you saw that.
I hadn't finished my comment here, so I was just finishing my thought here. So it was, um, so I just, it felt like there was a lot of, a lot of input in this thing that says, we're gonna fund this, we're gonna fund that. But I, but when we got, when it got to four point three, it didn't seem like there was a, didn't seem like a clear plan for where is that additional money gonna come from? And that was a concern. that was a concern to me. I don't necessarily know where that funding source is, but it's, it felt like in the housing element overall, potentially signing up to do a lot of things and there may not be the money to do it. Is that the only one that thought that? Is it too late? Is, is everybody ready to go to sleep? No? Okay. Maybe I'm the only one worried about. Krishna Haymeyer?
No, I, I think, just to echo Michaela, my general view is that the financing for this is so complicated. And there are so many different layers that I think being vague here might be advantageous.
Krishna Gutierrez?
Yes, um, going back to my previous point, Vice Chair, did you have your hand up prior to the chair speaking? Did you want to speak about?
You can put her hand up at any time, Krishna Gutierrez.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, Chair.
She can put her hand up at any time.
Oh, I think he was.
Vice Chair, help me out here.
Sorry, he was speaking to my accidentally hitting the raised hand at the end of the last one. And I just, I put it down. I think he's trying to just make sure that I didn't have something to say. It's okay. Thank you for the concern. I, I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
So it doesn't sound like those other commissioners who are concerned about the, the, the funding program item. Okay. There's not consensus. All right. Um, and the other, other, other item was if there's anything that we thought was missing from the program list. So we've gone through all the items. Is there anything that, if any commissioner thought was missing, should be added to the program list overall? Uh, Krishna Nunez, you'd, I thought there was, you had had some.
I, I absolutely did. I just, if anyone was gonna go first, then, um, yeah. So, um, I'll, I'll start off first. Um, so one of the things that I, I did find, um, uh, kind of like just completely missing, um, in some of these programs, um, was in acknowledgement around the, uh, you know, the nexus between uh, commercial development, the growth of office space, uh, and, uh, basically housing affordability, uh, in, in the city. Um, you know, I, 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 I look at the, uh, last arena cycle numbers and honestly, I feel very discouraged by the uh, totals of affordable housing units that were constructed. Um, and you know, that is all under this uh, kind of current, I, I, I would say, uh, paradigm around, you know, commercial development is, is, is very important because it gives us, um, you know, precious affordable housing funds, uh, that we use for our affordable housing. Well, you know, I look at last, uh, cycles numbers and, and the overall absolute value of, uh, units we were supposed to count for was um, substantially lower than what we're supposed to, um, bring online as part of this cycle. Uh, and, and, you know, we, we just absolutely, um, even though we're doing better than others, you know, in my mind, um, that's still not, uh, something satisfactory in terms of pursuing, um, the attainment of the goals. Um, and so, you know, I, I noticed, uh, both in the public comment and, you know, as part of emails, um, that this is a concern shared by the community as well. Um, you know, we've had, um, former, you know, like mayors and city council, uh, people and, um, you know, even former commissioners kind of speak to, um, that, uh, concern around, um, there is a, uh, serious lack of either acknowledgement or action being taken as part of this, um, program that in any, that, that happens to, um, you know, i- indicate that we are going to also, um, account for that as part of our development. Um, you know, I, I did notice in this, um, you know, housing element, uh, you know, document that it said that, um, let me see if I can pull it up. Specific quote that said, I'm getting it right. Um, anyway, there was another piece in there that said like that other projects, um, it was like in the preamble, other projects that could in, impact, um, you know, the, the, the amount of housing, the quality of housing, the affordability of housing, um, you know, was something that we could consider as part of this. Um, so one of the things that I really want to, um, you know, throw out there for the rest of the commission to, to, you know, kind of munch on and, and, you know, if, if there's enough support, I think that it would be wise for us, um, to recommend uh, to the council. It doesn't have to be anything specific. It doesn't have to be anything, um, you know, in, in, in terms of like a timeline that we're deciding here um, as, as the EPC. Um, but you know, whether the council decides, you know, hey, it's a good idea to look at um, the, the, the nexus between jobs and housing and acknowledging that we are definitely, um, overbalanced towards the jobs side of things. And whether they want to do, you know, uh, like anything from rezoning industrial or, um, you know, increasing housing, um, affordable housing fees, whatever that is. Um, I, 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 I do think, um, it's extremely worth it to, um, you know, for us to recommend that the city council, um, identify as part of these goals, some policy and or, and a program um, that could account for the jobs, housing imbalance, um, associated with new commercial growth. You know, I'm not talking like North Bay Shore or anything like that because obviously we need that for this cycle. Um, but moving forward, i- if, if we want to be very serious about, um, boosting housing affordability, um, then we have to acknowledge that jobs are a significant impact of that. Um, if, if we want to also try and lobby other cities or, you know, use our state lobbyists to try and, you know, kind of push for other policies as well that, that helps spread the burden around, you know, I'd be all for that too. But, um, just in general, um, the fact that there's not a discussion of that outside of the analysis that was made in the housing element draft. Um, you know, even if we're not required to do so, uh, if we want to, uh, you know, kind of really acknowledge the reality of, of, you know, new commercial space and the impacts that it has on our housing market, um, then I would, uh, you know, strongly put out there for everyone that, you know, we should consider recommending to council, um, you know, that, that they identify some way of acknowledging and addressing that. So, uh, that is what I'm positioning for, for everyone here.
Vice Chair Ian?
Um, well, thank you for bringing that up. Um, I rose, uh, raised my hand for something else, but I'll get back to that, uh, later on. Um, because I think that is an important one. Um, originally I was wanting to bring back to the conversation, uh, since Commissioner Dempsey wasn't there. Um, Mr. Anderson, you had mentioned that when we added as back pocket, some of the, um, village center sites above El Camino. I believe Commissioner Nunez had mentioned that the retail that was existing was very, very important to the community that exists there. And you, uh, Mr. Anderson, you had, um, mentioned that we didn't have any policy in place to keep it. It's goes development by development and developers often will maybe ask and get some outreach from the community to find out what they want to do. So my question is, is there anything that we can do in the housing element to try to encourage? As Gray Star did with the development, the housing development at El Camino and Castro, they allowed for the original tenants of the retail to come back at the same sort of lease rate for five years. And maybe that's something we could encourage. I don't know if this is the place to do it, but I, I feel like it's an important thing to have. So, um, just wanted to put that out there and allow Commissioner Dempsey to have a say since he wasn't available to talk about the specifics of those sites.
So I'm hearing two things. One, the should there be some kind of top level jobs linkage element of the, of the plan? And then, um, Vice, Vice Chair Ian, a program for helping to ensure preservation of small business during redevelopment. That, you know, it, it particularly the village centers and the like.
Especially if they're under served, yeah, communities.
Yeah. Uh, Krishna Clark, you had your hand up. Did you have a new item or were you going to comment on? Krishna Nunez's feedback or?
Oh, yeah, I, the topic changed, but, um, I, I guess to address both of those, I, I, I completely agree that there, um, it makes sense to address, um, you know, retaining, um, valuable neighborhood businesses. Um, I just don't think the housing element is the right place for that. Um, I, I think that's part of, um, that's, that's part of a, um, a separate process where we're looking at, you know, preservation of retail and other things. Uh, unless staff knows of a place in here that I've, I've missed where, you know, you can talk about, um, you know, businesses locally serving, um, the village centers. Perhaps there is a place where that can be weaved in, but I think the, the, the meat of that policy, um, would be through, um, through a, um, a separate process aside from the housing element. Um, and then of course you get into what is a valuable neighborhood serving business and what isn't, um, which is always a fun discussion, but, um, we'll save that for another night. Um, on the jobs, housing linkage, you know, I, I, in the, in the draft, um, I know staff referenced the jobs, housing linkage in, in, um, East Wisman, which I think is really great to highlight. Um, I, I would be happy to have, you know, a narrative or something in there talking about how we plan to use that as a model as we look at additional precise plans throughout the city, or maybe even, um, if we, if and when we reopen the general plan. Um, I'm not sure, um, uh, I'm not sure I'd be willing to go beyond that in a housing element, but, but I think it, it makes complete sense to talk about, you know, this has been jobs, housing linkage has been before, front of our conversations over the last several years. We as, as is already pointed out in the draft report, you know, we have a, uh, jobs, housing imbalance that's made pretty clear in all the data that was set forth in the, in the report. And we're being very open to our thoughts about that with the HDC. So, um, I'd be happy to talk about the example of East Wisman and how, you know, there, um, is a commitment to, you know, look at that going forward. But frankly, each individual area or precise plan is going to be a little bit different. There are going to be areas that might need to be more jobs heavy than, and there might be more areas that might need to be more housing heavy. Um, and so, um, anyway, I'm, I'm okay with, with beefing that up and talking about it a little bit more. Um, but I would hesitate to commit in the document that we're going to develop a jobs, housing linkage strategy across the, in the entire city without the, without the council chiming in and stating that they want to do that.
Mr. Dempsey?
Thank you, Chairman. So I, I think Commissioner Clark did a great job of, of laying out, um, I think how, he said how I guess I felt, uh, but he said it better than I could have. Um, you know, these are important questions. And I think the jobs, housing linkage is arguably one of the most questions, most important questions we're going to wrestle with here. Um, I've never done a housing element before. I'm still pretty new to this. Uh, so I don't always know what should or should not be done in a housing element, but I'm starting to feel like these are issues, important issues and ones we should talk about. I just don't know that we should put them in here into the housing element. Um, and that's, you know, I, I, Chris, what Chris described ways to beef up sort of the, the, the hat tip to, uh, the linkage. That, that sounds fine with me. Um, you know, preserving small businesses during redevelopment. I mean, that's, that's an important discussion because nobody wants to, to lose access to services while we're getting neighborhood upgrades. Um, great conversation. I just don't know that it fits here. Um, I'll leave it at that.
Vice Chair Ian?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, um, have that discussion elsewhere. Again, I wasn't sure if this was the place to do it unless, um, Mr. Anderson feels like there's something that could be put in, but I'm, I'm okay to have the conversation at another day in another venue. Um, just wanted to put that out there. And as far as the jobs, housing balance, yeah, I think that's an important conversation to have. I feel like development after development, we're chasing our tails and that's really the, the crux of like where we are, um, and why we're there. Um, and it's a huge conversation. So aside from the, the housing element, if this is not the place to do it, um, I am happy to, to say, yeah, let's beef that up as well. But I, I am in agreement that I would recommend to the council, maybe this is just like agenda seven, where you just want to talk about something to, to put forth to, um, council that maybe we should ask the questions. Um, you know, given choices, why do developers choose commercial? Uh, there's a reason and how can, in what ways can we incentivize that housing is just as attractive as commercial if we do turn to mixed use and things like that? So it, I think it's a good conversation to have. So if, if we could just recommend that we have that conversation, I'm happy to do that. Anything we can do to beef up the language here to use East Wisman as a sort of a point to say we are making strides. If we can say we're exploring different ways even, I mean, I know explore was already a, a word that we talked about, but if we're exploring things, then we may, maybe we can explore that too. I, I don't know. So I'll, I'll leave it for discussion for the, the commission.
Krishna Gutierrez?
Thank you, sir. Uh, no, I agree, Vice Chair, and, and not only explore, but also explore this and other things, right? But I, I think that dialogue is pretty interesting. We, we all see the same issues here of importance and how valuable that is to try to understand and remedy as much as we can while we're on the commission. Um, but I agree with everything that's been said so far from, from all commissioners. And, and I think Commissioner Clark or as Commissioner Dempsey said, expressing it right on or expressing the way I felt. So, thank you.
Mr. Nunez?
Um, I just want to say I definitely love, uh, Commissioner Clark's idea about, uh, really beefing that section up and uh, making it clear like, hey, we are doing innovative, uh, stuff and are, you know, committed to continuing our, um, you know, evolution on that. Um, and, and I just also want to be clear that, um, you know, in terms of like my ask or, you know, yeah, i- i- in this context, it's um, not to even like recommend that staff puts a goal or policy in there, but that we communicate to council, that we recommend to council, um, hey, you guys should consider or think about, um, whether you decide it's, you know, something you want to walk into the housing element or whether you decided something that you want to boomerang back around as, uh, work item, whatever that may be. Um, I just think it's important that we start to be very clear on acknowledging, you know, if we keep doing the same thing, we're going to get not just the same results, but increasingly worse results. So, um, that is, that is the ask.
So I'm, I'm, uh, kind of aligned with Commissioner Clark on this. Um, me, a city level jobs, housing linkage would be an extraordinarily broad strategic discussion by council and rethinking the way the city works going forward because there's so much linked into the, into the way the mix of, of the economy, the jobs, the neighborhoods that are today. And so I just, I'm, uh, I'm, I mean, it's not a housing element item. Um, if council wants to have that strategic discussion, cool, but I just, I think that's a big deal. So I'd be, uh, I'd be really reluctant to do that. And I, if there's another mechanism for looking at preserving, I, I think the, you know, the way, um, you know, the way Rose Market was preserved and the guy and the, and they initially Pete's over there at the, at the corner of El Camino and Castro was great. And, uh, I'd love to see that get preserving that kind of thing. And we've seen some of it. So it, I don't know if Eric, if that's a the item for a, you know, a, maybe a separate action is not a housing element item, but it's a, you know, we think there's some benefit of council considering that as maybe a future goal or something to look at, it's a small business, neighborhood business preservation during redevelopment would be a worthwhile thing. But I agree, it is probably not, probably not part of the housing element. Uh, Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, just two quick suggestions on the preservation of the retail. I think it would be fine to mention that in a comment to council of, you know, w- we are, we addressed the question of whether, you know, these, um, these, um, rezonings should, should occur. Uh, or the, you know, these should be included and occur. And I think it's perfectly valid to say, you know, yes, we're, we're on board with that. But, you know, one of the things we'll want to make sure is considered is, you know, the preservation of, of not just the retail space itself, but also some of the more valuable, um, community serving, um, retail that really impacts the.
Community serving um retail that really impacts the the neighborhoods around them. Um I I think I'd be perfectly fine, you know, applying that to council um as as we talk about the actual rezoning efforts. Um or or whatever needs to happen there. Um on the jobs housing, I think it would be really valuable to. Um right now, the document I just went back through, um it highlights the East Wisman example. If if council's okay with it, I'd be perfectly fine with the E P C recommending that. You know, maybe we we uh we state, if council's okay with it, we state that, you know, and we plan to use that as. Uh uh maybe I I'm struggling with whether I'd call it a model. Um but you know, something like that where we do a a jobs housing linkage analysis whenever we do. A future precise plan or maybe general plan amendments or 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 broader. Uh or or looking more broadly at the general plan if we if we do amendments in the future. I think that's in I I'd certainly support that sort of analysis. Um I ju- I just hesitate to get into the the citywide jobs housing um um linkage discussion. Because I think that's that's pretty separate.
Commissioner Haymeyer, did you agree from you?
Given the hour, I wouldn't. I would just echo back a lot of the comments. I think it's a larger conversation and and maybe not best suited in the housing element. Um but as we eventually reopen the general plan and look at some other broader strategies, that would be a better time.
So it sounds like we have consensus to, you know, reference the East Wisman precise plan. Um to to to, you know, reference that and tie that as a the potential framework. For future precise plans, um but not necessarily incorporate a. Not not incorporate a city level jobs housing linkage at this point. I think is what I'm hearing.
Mr. Indian.
Yep. So just to be clear, I am not supporting a recommendation of a citywide jobs housing linkage. I am very much supporting and in support of how what Commissioner Clark said in terms of. Hey, you know, we have this really cool thing that we did and, you know, whether it's communicated to council. As like, uh, hey, we think it's worthwhile for you guys to consider this, consider, not adopt, not implement, not, you know, legislate. That, hey, you know, when you are opening up new precise plans or um, you know, as you're moving forward in the future and thinking about like rezoning. That a jobs housing linkage and it and and that policy is even a specifically named policy, right? Like, there's a range of types of solutions and policies that can be employed to manage the jobs housing imbalance. Um the statement that I'm saying um and supportive of is we ought to communicate to council. That um the commission feels that those are worth the time to consider to address that issue. Um and if I did get that more or less right with uh how Commissioner Clark was phrasing. Um I also think I heard Commissioner um or Vice Chair Yin kind of support that. Um so I just want to be clear that I'm not speaking to a citywide jobs housing linkage as a policy. I am saying that more or less we ought to convey, um aside from the, you know, like expansion of, you know, discussion of like. What we've done with East Wisman in the draft. Um I'm also saying that we should convey to the council in some shape or form. That the commission thinks that considering these issues and having these discussions um is worth the time. And then it's up to them how they want to go about it.
Mr. Clark.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I mischaracterized your um your intention there. Um uh Commissioner Indian, yes, I didn't mean to. Um I I misunderstood. Um so I think for me, it's it's very simple. Uh I as the current, as the document currently reads, it's like. There was this job housing linkage thing that we did with the East Wisman precise plan. Look at it. It's pretty cool. Um and I and I think what I'd uh what I'd recommend that we we do is say, not only did we do this thing. It wasn't just a one-time thing. It's going to be something that we look at going forward and and, you know, determine whether it's applicable to. Different um things that we do in the future, if if council's okay with that, but that's what I would recommend.
I think we have consensus around. Um and I think it's those consensus that we would um not necessarily incorporate the. The if there's a if there's a it's a framework for. If there's a way that makes sense within the housing element for preserving neighborhood neighborhood serving retail. Then that'd be great, but I guess it's we need staff to understand if that's. You know, if there's if there's a way to incorporate that it makes sense, um that would be it would be supportive. But if it needs to be something separate, I think it's. As a the commission feels that that's a valuable thing that we should be trying to do one way or the other. Right? Then we will close off the projects and move on to the house of the site inventory. Those are questions here. Okay, so are there any, is the E P C's support recommendations in the draft site inventory? The inclusion of the El Camino Village Center rezoning? Or are there any recommendations on any in additional sites um as part of the inventory? Commissioner Haymeyer.
Um I just to kick us off, I I will say like the revised inventory, and I think um a lot of the feedback that had been prevented presented in February. Thank you for incorporating it. The one site, um I'm still scratching my head around, and we heard Emily say today is the C S A site. Um I don't believe that there are any plans um for that in the next eight years to transition to anything other than office space. So if staff has more information, um that's just a site that it's such a valuable resource as it is certain community. That I I I didn't know much about that piece, so that's the one I'd like to see removed. And the two other sites um that were presented tonight during public comment. It sounds like there's fairly good reason from staff and maybe not so lean in the direction of adding them. But I I'd be eager to hear what the other commissioners have to say.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, I I agree that uh staff had um given sufficient reason to um and they had their reasons. Didn't go into detail about why they didn't want to include those two sites, and it sounds perfectly reasonable to me. So um I'm going to defer to their judgment on that. Um and yeah, earlier when I mentioned the Charleston site. I'm just putting it out there as a possibility since we have such limited um land. And that seems like an opportune, an opportunity to investigate. So I don't know if it's something where we want to say, let's investigate as back pocket. Um if needed, that we look at industrial sites um or if we want to just look at that site. But if it's easier to just look at that site, I'm just putting it out there as a possibility uh for. Or um investigating.
Mr. Dempsey.
I'm fine with the staff recommendation as it is.
Mr. Indian.
Um, yeah, I definitely would also say that I found the C S A um incorporation to be. A little bit like odd, because even if it did redevelop, then we might, like, what would happen to C S A? That's a pretty good location for them. Um so I I I don't, I haven't talked to C S A. I don't know what their intents and plans are, but it it's it did strike me as like. Um the other thing, I I I I do want to um reiterate or reiterate uh on supporting um the uh. R E I Best Buy site. Um I understand some of the thinkings and concerns around like what the intent of the. Uh, you know, owner of the land is um I and 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 to the best of my knowledge, as far as I can tell. Um, you know, like the city does have police power over land and land use. Um and if, you know, the city makes a determination that, hey, there would be some public benefit um by, you know, redeveloping. Or or rezoning this um and and I I might, I mean, maybe Sandy would be able to help me out here. But like, in my understanding too, like, um, that's not like a bad thing, like, we're not depriving um the owner of the land. Like, all economically viable use of 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 his land. Um maybe they won't have the best and highest use of the land. In terms of like um monetary compensation, but there's, you know, I I believe the standard is, you know, like, what? Like, what's left over, you know, like, how much, how much money, you know, is actually there um that they can still make? Um and and not be deprived again of like all economically viable use of the land. Um so when I look at it, it's it's all, you know, blacktop. Um it's kind of defunct retail sites. Um and in line with the previous conversation that, you know, we just had. Do we value jobs more? Um do we value a biotech campus more than like a mixed-use vibrant neighborhood retail site? Close to the freeway? Um I would very much choose the latter, so um I I do want to emphasize that I'm very supportive of. Um either including that as like a back pocket site, um or even just kind of throwing it onto the map as a proactive rezoning.
Mr. Clark.
Yeah, I I'm generally fine with the staff recommendation on this. I think uh, well, I'll let staff chime in on the C S A site. But my my guess is that, you know, it it never hurts to have additional um. Uh uses available for your site. Um land swaps happen. Um all sorts of interesting things happen. And while it's a an amazing organization, obviously in a pretty solid location now. Um it doesn't mean there won't be even amazing, even more amazing um facilities and locations in the future. So um but all let staff chime in as to as to why that particular site was on there. Um with respect to the um the shopping center at Rangsdorf and and one-on-one. I think we're a little late in the game to be um adding things that require significant analysis. If it's if it's really simple to add something as and also, you know, as as recommended by staff with this um this site list. You know, we we have a pretty significant buffer, or at least a reasonably significant buffer. Um so I don't think we necessarily need that site, but if there's an easy way to add it as a back pocket site or something like that. That doesn't require significant analysis, then I don't think I'd necessarily be opposed to that. But um I think as others have said, the uh the likelihood of of that of that property owner. Um being interested in in doing residential is um at least in the near future seems. Seems low, but those things can change on a dime as the market changes, so um. We'll see. Uh maybe we can ask staff how they feel about that and how much effort is is required to add something as a back pocket.
Yeah, there's no uh real effort to adding something as a back pocket. It's um, you know, there's, there's also not a whole lot of cost either. Because the um, you know, will be the opportunity of future councils to kind of pick from. The the menu that we're setting up for them um at a later date. So um not not a real uh um amount of effort or cost there. Um and we certainly don't need to plan for density or design or anything like that at this stage for that. The other question you had was about C S A, and I heard this from a few other folks. Um we have been in communication with C S A. They are interested in uh working with the city on something on that site. Um I don't have a whole lot of details about it and, you know, what what would happen to their location. But um as Chris said, there there could be potential opportunities uh to to work collaboratively with them.
And then in that case, just so you don't have to hear from me again, I think in that case, you know, if we were to add the uh the um. The shopping center Rangsdorf in one-on-one is a, I I think what we'd, what I would recommend is that council consider adding it as a back pocket site. I wouldn't go quite as far as to say the council should add as a back pocket site. But um it might be worth between now and the council meeting, um doing a little bit more research and just saying that the E P C um brought it up. But that's just my opinion.
Mr. Kira.
Thank you, Chair. Um yeah, I I like the ideas presented so far. I like the two back uh pocket suggestions. And I also um. Agree with the staff recommendations. Um just thinking out loud, it'd be pretty interesting if maybe C S A could. Maybe reach out to the Los Alamos School District to see if there's a possibility of a transfer of rights there somehow. I'm not sure if it will work out or not, but it'd be pretty exciting to see.
Um, Christian Clark, do you have another item?
Sorry.
Um so I I'm generally supportive of the the staff recommendation. I am. The idea of adding the the site at at uh by one-on-one as a back pocket. And not including the two sites where people have actual projects uh that they want to do. Seems. Inconsistent to me. Um if we're gonna if we're gonna add back pocket, I would probably add. You know, nine-on-one Rangsdorf and uh whatever the address is at the corner of El Camino and 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 Castro. Um if we're not going to add those, then I would not add the 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 site at Rangsdorf. If, you know, I to me. There we actually have people who want to redevelop and want to put in housing and the other, we have no idea. And so I'm just, I'm I'm uh I'm troubled by the what I it seems to be an inconsistency to me. So, Mr. Indian.
I think we should totally add both. As back pocket. I agree with the need for consistency. I totally think we should add both.
Um I'll just say, if I can just step in, I know I wasn't asked a question. But um as we um a- as projects get built. It it adds to our inventory, so um we don't necessarily need a. Uh to add pipeline projects to the back pocket, because if they get built, they get added to the inventory. Um no matter what. Um so um I guess that it would be a little bit redundant to have them in the back pocket. As though, yes, once we approve them, then they get added to the inventory, but they get added to the inventory anyway when we put them.
But that wasn't my point. It was, I just, to me, act going after a project, a location that has not expressed interest in residential. Has other intentions in mind and has. And we, you know, the part of the the inventory is supposed to be those things where we have realistic expectation of, there's some realistic expectation of it happening. And if there's no nothing, we've seen nothing from the current owner of the of the R E I site. Then that to me seems very inconsistent with that. That's all. But so it's, that's what I'm. I'm not advocating adding either one at this point. I just, if if you're going to add one, I would probably put the ones where they actually want to do it first. Rather than the ones where we don't know. That's that wasn't advocating. Then we add it. Sorry, Eric. I couldn't misconstrue that. So, Vice Chair.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that um at least for me, the consistency issue is that the staff has already given. Recommendations to not add those two because of whatever reasons. But for the other site, it was a a request to ask council to investigate it because I do not know what is going on with that site. So um not knowing, I just put it out there to recommend to council to put in a back pocket. Now, Mr. Anderson, I understand what you're saying. We don't need a back pocket necessarily, a buffer, because we have the thirty percent. And maybe it doesn't need to be that, but the recommendation just to look at into it as a possibility is is still there. Because we do, I did not have information on that um site, and it just seemed like a good opportunity. But if staff has already said, these two projects we've looked at and we've just, we've determined that it's not a good idea to put them on. That is information to me that says we've already investigated. It's not a good idea.
Mr. Kira, did you have your hand up? No, okay. But I'm I'm not. I'm not necessarily hearing consensus to add. Any of the sites at this point, a majority to add the sites. Is that correct?
I have, I have three commissioners and I'm not opposed to adding Charleston Plaza to the back pocket. I I think that means. Uh, yeah, I don't know. We 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 did not hear from Commissioner Haymeyer on that question, but. Yeah, I don't know. We 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 did not hear from Commissioner Haymeyer on that question, but.
Mr. Clark?
I think my, at the risk of money in the water, I think my recommendation would be not that that the EPC. Formerly recommended council that it be added as a back pocket, but that we um, between. That we sort of flag that that the EPC was um, interested in exploring adding that site as a. As a back pocket site just for some additional um, buffer, but others may feel differently.
Mr. Haymeyer?
Yeah, I'm happy to chime in. I don't, based on what I've heard from staff and where I think we are with the back pocket. The Charleston Plaza doesn't make sense to me um, um, this housing. So I. But I just don't think it's close to services, that we're adding a bunch of housing on the other side of the freeway. It's just, there are a lot of reasons why I don't think it makes sense. Um, and I feel like we have a sufficient pipeline other places and I'd like to, I'd really like us to see. If we're going to add more housing to distribute it across the city. And I know we received a letter from the El Camino Hospital folks saying, you know, maybe that's not the best place. But I think we really need to be looking across the city, not in an area where we know we're going to be adding a lot of of housing in the future.
Mr. Dempsey?
Again, I I I think what Commissioner Clark said makes makes a ton of sense. We can signal that we'd be curious to have a conversation about that spot. But I don't see any reason why we need to add it today.
Mr. Nunez?
Yep, totally in line with Commissioner Clark's uh, position as stated.
It sounds like it's, so Eric, I mean, I'm not hearing consensus to add it as a back pocket. But there's it, but there was a discussion and interest that at least should be shared with council. As a as a potential residential site. Is that, I think that's what I'm hearing. And did we get consensus around the CSA site? I'd heard a couple of people concerned. Um, it sounds to me, I don't know a lot about it. It sounds like. If if they're interested, then I'm okay leaving it and leaving it on the list.
Yeah, I stand corrected. I I didn't know that CSA had reached out to the city. It just seems, it struck me as odd, given my use, but if there are any conversations, I I'm happy to. To first step.
Okay. Then. The next item was in that, the next item is the, is the draft strategy for the rezoning of El Camino Village. Village Centers. Does the county commissioners support that? Mr. Clark?
I I do support it and um. I not just El Camino, but the others that were recommended along with the staff recommendation to do, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, um, at this late hour, but. To also do those rezonings as part of the uh, alongside the housing element as opposed to delaying them.
Seeing nods from Mr. Nunez, Mr. Gutierrez? I'm hearing nods and thought knobs and thumbs up from everybody. Um. And I think the only thing I would note is that is the caveat that was mentioned earlier about that the retail needs to be. Comparable. It's not, uh, there's no expectation that it's going to minimal levels, that it's comparable to the level of retail that's. Retail and neighborhooding, so neighborhood serving businesses in those areas. Being thumbs up associated. So same kind of feedback that we had on the other.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the the staff recommendation was for the El Camino Village Centers, the Turpland Village Centers that we already discussed. As well as 87 East Evelyn, that one site. Um, and that we would bring those rezonings back to the EPC and council along with adoption of the housing element.
Yep, I think we're on board with that. Yes? Um, any other feedback on the housing element that folks would like to bring up at this point? Where's my agenda? Oh, Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone. I know it's late and we got through this. Thank you for your time and patience. Appreciate it.
So we will move on to item six, which is commission staff announcements, updates, requests, and video reports. No actions will be taken on any, on anything presented this time. Um. The updates from staff or commissioners?
Uh, just uh, very briefly, a couple of things. One is um, that uh, the 555 West Middlefield project, I'm sure you all probably heard, did get, did get approved. By council uh, last week. Uh, so that's a a big project that the EPC put a lot of work into and um. Did ultimately get approved. Um, the next meeting that we have is June 1st and we will have a study session about. A proposed new office building on East Evelyn Avenue. That's part of the LASD TDR program. Um, and then one other um, kind of administrative item. We are um, going to stop doing written answers to EPC questions. Couple of reasons for that, just um, you know, uh, not enough staff time for uh, review. We want to make sure that um, these issue, you know, the questions get aired during the meetings so that everybody really has an opportunity to hear them. And so um, we we won't be doing more written answers, but I do want to stress that. There is still a role for sending in written questions ahead of time. Uh, we would definitely like to get your questions ahead of time, especially if they. Involve any research that we might need to do. Uh, so by all means, uh, send in questions ahead of time, uh, but um. We are going to stop doing the answers.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Updates? Then uh, I too will thank everyone for a long evening. The the. About quarter after 11 here, past my bedtime. Um, but uh, thank you everyone for your, for for uh, sticking with it here. It's an important topic and uh. It's a good discussion. So we will adjourn the meeting at 11:17 PM until our next meeting on June 1st. June 1st. Thank you, everyone.